Today it is Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, 6:00 PM. First we're going to call the meeting of the Board of Liquor Commissions to order. We have three departments. Moose Loyal Order of Lodge #527 Inc., DBA Moose Loyal Order of Lodge #527, first-class liquor and outside consumption permit. Second one is Popolo Restaurant Group, DBA Popolo, first-class liquor and outside consumption permit. And third is Barton Energy LLC, DBA Barton Energy LLC, second-class liquor.
So would you rather entertain a full swoop of all three?
Sure, unless anyone has any issues with any of them.
Okay. I'll make the motion that the Board of Liquor Commissioners approve the following liquor licenses for the Moose, Loyal Order of Moose #527, first-class liquor and outside consumption permit, Popolo Restaurant, DBA Popolo, first-class liquor and outside consumption permit, and Barton Energy LLC, DBA Barton Energy, second-class liquor.
On seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now call the meeting of the Select Board to order at, so two I believe it is. Are there any additions to the agenda for routine administrative matters and/or pressing matters that will require ratification at a future meeting?
Nope.
Great. Approved minutes of March 20th, 2018.
Approved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. All right. Managers report.
A few things. The town-owned property at 38 Green Street in Bellas Falls has been advertised for sealed bid auction. Those looking to view the solicitation can refer to the municipal website, or you can call our office and look forward to it if you'd like. Viewing of the site scheduled for this Friday, April 6th, from 9:00 to 9:30 AM, and bids are due no later than 4:00 PM on April 17th, after which they'll be opened by the Select Board. I've sent the solicitation out to area realtors. We've posted it on Facebook pages for the different town and village departments, and distributed it to all the board members. So if you know anybody who might be interested, and those in the audience, again, if you'd check our municipal website or call my office, we'll be happy to send to you the solicitation that we put out there. Sealed bid, no minimum bid. The abandoned residential structure at 42 Hyde Street has been demolished as of last Friday, and we did it at the agreed-upon price of $10,250 by Hodgkins &amp; Sons, and did a very, very nice job. Interestingly, what was left behind is some kind of old, I don't know if it's a root cellar or some kind of structure. It's worth taking a look at. I'm a little concerned actually from a safety standpoint. It'd be a great place for kids to hang out. But it's a structure we'll be looking at to see if we can secure it somehow. But they did a super job, and what was a real eyesore is now gone. I know the Listers know about that one, and that the old terrace property also has been removed. We're experiencing some vandalism at the Well Street Playground, we've noticed, including some recreational equipment and the dog waste dispenser. So we have been in contact with the police department, trying to make sure that they stepped up the patrols, but there has been some damage. I don't know that it reaches the, it wouldn't be an insurance claim due to the value, but it's problematic, and we're keeping an eye on it. Ryan Stoudli has reported the Easter egg hunt was a great success this year. We had really good weather, really good turnout. Two hundred, excuse me, 2,000 eggs, we give it out. About 200 kids ages grades four and down, of which 40 to 50 were grades two to four, 150 from first grade down. So it's a lot of kids, which is great. The new Highway Department 10 Wheeler has been delivered, registered, insured, and it's on the road, Mike, is that correct?
Yes.
So I wanted to thank the Board and the Highway Department for pulling together so quickly, and for Patriot Motors also for working with us on that. Lawn and leaf debris pickup has began April 1st. Goes from April to May 31st, Mondays through Fridays only, clear bags only, available at the town clerk's office and at the recycling center, four bags for a dollar. So please stay on top of that. It's a great opportunity to get rid of all that lawn and leaf debris. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any questions? First thing on the agenda is a ratification of vote taken 3/20/2018, award bid for paving Westminster Bridge Streets Square. So that was the minutes.
What did your minutes say?
Uh-huh. Where was it? Okay. So, the minutes. Peter Golick made the motion to award a bid for the Westminster Bridge Street paving project to include bid alternate for section 1 through 7, and to allow night paving of the projects with the exception of no night paving in the old terrace area to Bates &amp; Brothers, strucking in the amount of $299.170. Motion was seconded by Gaetano Putignano. Motion passed unanimously.
I'll make the motion, the vote of Selectmen, ratify the vote of the awarding of the paving bid from 3/20. I got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bellas Falls United High School alumni, Ben.
Yep.
Hi, Ben.
Hi.
So you're here to request for a fee reduction for the use of the Waypoint Center and theater and entertainment permit, and request for the use of alcohol on town-owned property, correct?
That's correct, yeah. Same, nothing's changed, same as every year, just the dance on Friday night at the Waypoint Center at 12:00. And then the parade on Sunday.
Any questions or any movement, motion to waive the...
What is the fee for...
Fifty.
Fifty for theater and entertainment, fifty for the Waypoint. So I'll move that we reduce it by $25 for each.
Does that make sense?
Fifty is the reduced fee.
Oh, fifty is the reduced, oh.
It is the reduced fee.
I moved it.
We don't want to hear what you mean.
You really gave me the deal. Ben's like an ass.
I knew.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone do the true of liquor?
Oh, yes, that's right.
It's not on there.
Yes.
Move that we approve the figures of alcohol on town-owned property.
On seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Listers Office, Sustainable Valley Group, discuss Select Board decision of 12/19/2017. Milla.
The Listers were apprised of the minutes for your decision, quote, "the minutes of the 12/19" discussion around Sustainable Valley Group as a special statute that was brought to your attention, which is, it involves VITA, and we provided, we do with some attachments so that you'd have a look at it. We needed to do some research because we were a little confused by the whole situation. VITA, projects that are involved with VITA loans are new to us in this town. I hope there are more of them. Generally, it's, our discussion didn't really revolve around that, but we did need to do some research about how to handle it, and in regards to the statutes that were brought to your attention. And they were brought to our attention in July. But when they were brought to our attention in July, the deadline for making any such changes was gone by, so it bumped to the following year. And I, we didn't see any mention of that or clarity about that in your discussion, and we didn't see that it was in errors and omissions, and, you know, we were just a little confused. So we did research and are coming back to you with the results of our research to get clarity about those minutes. We don't want anyone to misunderstand where this is going. So Sarah Jarvis at Vermont League of Cities and Towns, her feedback was very clear that the authority to decide exemptions of any kind of the grand list lies with the Board of Listers. So it's really up to the Board of Listers to interpret the statute and apply it. And we are already, too late to apply it to 2017. We will be looking at it for 2018. So just here to clarify that.
Okay.
I don't think there's any decision for you to make, because it's with us, but I think it felt like you were making a decision, and we didn't want to leave that in limbo. Right?
Yeah.
That's why I'm here, and we've done that research.
So we don't have to rescind that? Must have been a vote?
I don't think so. We just did something we weren't legally allowed to do.
I think if, I'm not really sure that's your process, but if the minute is very clear from what we've brought to you tonight, and you feel that you understand it, it says the authority is with the Board of Listers and will be working on this for 2018, and we're still not absolutely clear how that statute applies. So it's interesting to read what your discussion was about it and so what, and we've contacted Sustainable Valley Group. Make sure they come and talk with us again about it.
And this, they're apprised of that and have an understanding?
Yes, I sent, I sent Dave Monta an email saying we were going to be here tonight on this piece of it, and then invited them to come and talk to the Listers in person about their understanding.
If I could, I think back at that time, it was, at least my understanding, that the statute, that's what was clear, and I don't read it as clearly as you do, I guess. So the feeling was at that point that it was foregone conclusion that it was tax exempt, but again, as she points out, they make the decision on that.
And the timing.
What's that?
The timing was confusing.
True. And then, and what was only, and this is December 19th, what was approved was...
Basically a payment of taxes.
For payment in lieu of taxes. So they can only do a payment in lieu of taxes if they're in, if they're tax exempt. So you say it is premature, but I just wanted, I'm not sure if I'm making it any clear, but the decision that you made at that point was not whether or not it was tax exempt or not simply to offer the payment in lieu of taxes.
But as Darian has asked, should, because that motion was made, and I believe I made it, should that be rescinded, since we have this new understanding, or...
Well, it is going to be reflected in the minutes of this meeting that we didn't have the authority, so maybe we're okay to just let it go.
Because...
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to come to you. There's nothing for anybody to sign. You authorize the manager to sign something that's never going to come to him in this format.
Okay.
So, I mean...
So 10 VSA 236 should not be applicable, though, as far as payment in lieu of taxes?
It might be.
Not, not for 2017, and...
And that would be in your realm for, and they are going to discuss that, I'm sure, next year.
Right. If you were to come up with a payment in lieu of taxes, it would be automatic, if that's the way we understand the statute to apply. It wouldn't require a motion from you at all.
Okay. So I'll make sure I'm standing clearly, or interpreted the same way.
But you're saying, if the Board of Listers decides that it is tax exempt, the payment in lieu of taxes would not be anything that...
I think we would...
The Board, this Board gets involved with it?
It's not a stabilization agreement. The way, the way you were reading it is like a stabilization agreement.
Exactly.
And in fact, we went to the Sustainable Valley Group. That was my response to them, was because we're after the fact of our grand list, the only thing I know of that would be able to go, to be in, be retroactive would, I've known stabilization agreements to be done retroactively by the Select Board.
And that'd be in the authority, similar to what we did with the Hyde...
And I think that's where they got it in their hands, that they should come to you.
Right.
They went to the stabilization committee, which, for numerous reasons, didn't complete that process either. So there's a sort of perfect storm of confusing situations that led up to this one.
I'll say a good catch by you, in your...
So if something needs to be signed off, why don't we come back to you again, fresh?
Right.
Yep, makes sense.
I'm thinking about the mechanism, how they get billed for that, the amount in lieu of taxes.
We would put a value, I believe.
Right.
But we'll...
To come later on.
Part of our research is, let's go talk to a town that actually has been implementing this particular set of statutes, and see exactly what the mechanism is, how they do it, how they interpret it, and what happens when the thing has been developed and then filled, and then there's a vacancy again afterwards. That part puzzles us completely.
Yeah.
But I don't need to get into the details of that.
It may make sense then to rescind that vote without prejudice, so that next year when they come back, if it...
If that simplifies it, clarifies it, maybe you should...
All right. Motion to rescind?
I'll make the motion to rescind the vote, reference the...
We'll get, let him make the motion, and then we'll have discussion.
Reference the agreement and the motion that was made on the, in reference to Sustainable Valley Group, reference to motion I made in reference to section 10 VSA statute 236 for payment in lieu of taxes. Second for discussion.
Yes.
Dave Monta, President, Sustainable Valley Group, just wanted to leave a couple of points for the record. First of all, SVG has no issue with the Listers' concerns. Second of all, historically, basically since May of 2015, SVG has sought help from the town in figuring out how to address tax issue, while the majority, if the building was unoccupied, the majority of the building was unoccupied, since its last two tenants had closed, and SVG wanted to formulate a plan to finance a renovation and fit up for new tenants. Three, in 2011, SVG demolished and renovated 38 Island Street, and at that time described to the Listers the nature of the incubator facility, that is SVG's local development corporation status with VITA. VITA's financing stipulation in this incubator of charging below-market rents to help with startups, job creation, and retention, when the Listers did a site visit to reassess the tax value of the property. And four, given VLCT's letter indicating that the tax exemption in 10 from our stat presented 236 is mandatory, and given that SVG proved to the Select Board satisfaction in December that the property met the criteria, SVG respectfully requests that the Select Board give a legal opinion on these two points. One, on the VLCT letter, and provide guidance on how SVG and the Listers' office should proceed. And two, if the Listers get to vote or opine on the exemption or timing of the exemption, or if they have to apply the exemption if the property meets the criteria. And if the legal opinion is yes on the above two items, then SVG respectfully requests the exemption and whatever process is recommended in the legal option, the legal opinion above, and is implemented, implemented for the 2017 and '18 tax year, and conditions as of that time period, as well as any appropriate current conditions.
Can we copy that, yeah?
Yeah.
The other...
So, I don't, legal opinion will be necessary to do?
Who has the burden of proof here? Them to prove it's exempt, or we to prove it exempt? I'm putting y'all this out there, I know.
Sure, that's a good question. I know where you, I...
You know where I'm going.
I do, I do. There are a couple of parts to this. The grand list has been closed, so it would be, I don't know what mechanism there would be to go backwards. I don't know of a mechanism to go backwards for a tax year that's been billed and closed. But to answer your question, where that, we would make the decision, as best we understand it, they would appeal that, which is certainly happens in towns where someone is convinced that their property is exempt for one reason or another. They can appeal that, and it goes to the BCA.
Correct.
Where your language about burden of proof starts to come in. And, but seeking a legal opinion before, to help Listers with a statute that we're not entirely familiar with would be welcome.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just trying to say...
You actually suggested that, too. Yeah, the burden of proof concept comes in on appeal.
Yeah, I know it goes on appeal, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I'm excited on a few of those boards, I'm a little familiar with it, but, but I can understand a point where you, Listers, may want to get a legal opinion to get a defining factor on that.
We started that process, you could say.
Okay.
Yeah, we also have contacted our district advisor, property value issue.
We usually try to go, we've talked about it, we go, try to go to VLCT first because it's free, and see where that leads us, and then, you know, the next step would be PVR, but also Steve Anguda ultimately.
Sure. And the way other towns have handled it, I was going to contact a VITA staff person and say, can you tell us some other towns that you know of that work with properties in this? And then I'd go to the, talk with the towns.
So actually rescinding this vote isn't really going to interrupt that process?
Not at all, no.
It's just going to come back to us eventually anyway, one way or the other, either at the BCA level or your level, so.
It's already in the Listers' lap right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been, we've had many discussions and thoughts about it, actually.
So are you happy with that process?
Yes, it sounds very reasonable.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So take a vote to rescind?
Take one?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
We'll learn something about this, I'm sure.
Always.
Highway Department. First is to approve the annual financial plan, Town Highways.
That's, every year, the manager and Mike and someone from the district office, we sit down and we, we go over the budgets, and they put this together, and most of, in the most part, this assists the town if there's any kind of disaster, these are the numbers that help calculate how much assistance we'll get, and they're always very generous about where they calculate to our advantage.
And where does the $2,513,800 come from? I see where the $1,877... Was there supposed to be something put in that special funds category to get that in there, or... Or is that the total of all of that?
That's total of all of it.
Okay, sorry. All right. I thought that was a subtotal, and then there was something else. Okay, got it. I need to get out my calculator to calculate. All right, so we need a motion to approve annual financial plan.
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, the RSMS update, Everett, I'm going to have to move.
Okay, just give me a second here.
Hopefully it'll work.
Should work.
Huh? I don't want to do that.
Peter, you can.
It may still be a bit...
Karen, just checked out the liquor licenses, there's some certificate missing in there.
Stefan's and Susan's.
That's what I thought. I need to play it down to second page.
Oh. Your own want a woman, I'll be the other.
Yeah, there's a couple of them, I think that's the first one, sorry. I think Stefan's inside, or something.
Do you need some down here?
I have some plates here. I think I've got a change. But, just in case, I'll... Yeah, this is Everett Hammond, for anybody who doesn't know me. The rest of the board, I know. This is, I switched the cover sheet out, I'm not sure if you guys actually had a copy. I think it looks like we do have a copy of the report.
Yes.
So this is, you know, if anyone put the cover sheet I had on there, it was probably the worst road in town. Which doesn't fare well for, I could put the best road in town, you know, some other road in downtown as well, but as a summary, what we've got here is Class 1, one, let's focus a little more, 1.453 miles. Class 2, it is 7.742 miles. Class 3, a total of actually at the bottom, 28.066. Actually, Class 2 is a total of 15.481, sorry about that. The different statuses, you'll see all the way down through, so no maintenance for Class 2, for example, is 7.742. Preventative maintenance is 2.831. Rehabilitation, 1.59. Reconstruction is 3.318. And likewise, in the, you see the numbers right there in the Class 3 roads. And this, this is all just the paved roads on this regulation, so paved road evaluation. Eventually, we're working on the gravel road evaluation, but that'll be kind of a different report. So everything you see here will be paved roads. Way to the right, you'll see kind of an overall percentage of the Class 1, 2, and 3. 37% is under the no maintenance category. Routine maintenance, 3%. Preventative, 25%. Rehabilitate, 18%. And reconstruction, 17%. Total of 45 miles even. Let's see. Just kind of index there. This is, Mike Heinz and I started last November, thank you, Mike, for all this time out there, rating all of the paved roads using the RSMS program, which is based out of University of Maine. At one point it was part of New Hampshire, but Maine is one that handles this program now. And some of the key points here for University of Maine is, they're looking, trying to maximize, this is in the square box here, maximize return on investment for each dollar spent, maintain highest quality possible road town, wide road quality, and create a transparent, systematic, and non-biased methodology for road repairs, this is quotes right from them, and generate long-term budgetary estimates and work plans. So they try to take the politics out of, and that's what they're trying to do, is take politics out of, you know, my road's the worst road, no, no it isn't, having a systematic approach, so once you've got it down, this is a budget you have, you're trying to follow it. The data collection, you know, after we collected all the data, it takes into account road roughness, this is on the bottom there, road condition, traffic volume, and importance. And then, one of the older programs, which I kind of like better, actually did a PCI index, 0 to 100, this is a version before this. This new program does not do that. It actually gives you a rating of what you see on top there. No maintenance, which is very good. Routine, which is good.
So it says you estimated the traffic volume, right? That was done by you?
Yeah, the traffic volume, I didn't estimate the traffic volume. What it was, based on Class 2 roads, the highest traffic volume... what it was, based on Class 2 roads, the highest traffic volume. Mike and I sat down, based on his experience in town, he's been around, I've had, I've got number of years' experience here, so it's not, it's not-
No one sat and watched traffic?
Yeah, no one sat and watched traffic. If you're, if you're going to try and do that for every road in towns, then you're looking at a hundred, $200,000 plus engineering estimate to come up with that. And it's still, even though you come up with an idea and I criteria what you're trying to do here, there's still just, you know, you're not, doesn't mean you're going to do the highest traffic volume roads first, because you're trying to, you're trying to maximize your return on the dollar by, you know, if you're in one segment of town, maybe you're going to do a few other streets, even if it's not quite ready yet. So that down the road, it's going to, you know, you're optimizing your paving crew from jumping around. So there is, there is some value to the traffic, but in, for the most part, that's what it goes by, is traffic. And importance, we use actually importance in traffic as one in the same, unless there was some overriding, like fire station, for example, if that was on a street that wasn't on a Class 1 road, you'd want to bump the fire station up, you know, for importance. But it's there, so, you know, it got, I believe, a total of 10 points anyway. Five, five for the traffic, five for the volume, five for the importance. So, yeah, the five, no maintenance, routine, preventive, rehabilitate, and reconstruction, which is very poor, so in general, it's very good, good, fair, poor, and very poor. And the curve that you see there, there's a curve at RSMS, and you'll see in a lot of road programs, so what it's really telling you is, when the roads are in good shape, if you can actually do routine maintenance, could be a chip seal, overlay, you know, you try to do some of that before they start heading, heading down the steep curve to rehabilitate and reconstruction. Because once you get down to those two, you're spending, probably on rehabilitate, probably three, three times as much, reconstruction, probably closer, 10 times as much, you know, to redo the road.
You could chip seal it after 10 years for a good surface, still? Is that what that's saying?
Chip seal, you could.
If you maintain the road.
Ideally, what we've done, for example, years ago, probably back in 2002, when Re-Circle, Grizzle Drive, when not, Re-Circle, Pierce Circle, all the ones up on top of the hill, when reconstructed, did base one year, top next year, chip seal the year after. So actually, chip sealed it, we sealed the right place, kept the, kept the oils in the asphalt. And it's, it needs, at the time, now it's still in good shape up there, it should be addressed soon, you know, so that ideally, if a road is done right, you're looking at perennial chip seals, which is the most cost-effective way of preserving roads. And you're not adjusting manholes, you're not adjusting catch bases, gate valves, so there's a lot, there's some savings to that. So ideally, two or three, they say five or six, but I prefer two or three for chip seals. Or even right off the bat, you do it, do it overlay, chip seal the same year.
Within a couple of years.
That's usually the best way of doing it. Because if you don't, if you wait two or three years, then politically, why are you, why are you putting money into that? Right from the get-go, don't even give your pavement time to oxidize. Don't give it time to start drying out, to crack. Even though if it's bad enough underneath, it will crack. So this just kind of gets into the repair strategies down here. No maintenance is, you know, no work required. Routine maintenance, that's the most cost-effective use of the funds, that's, you know, could be your ditching, cleaning culverts and patching. Preventative, that's your crack filling, chip seals, shimming, overlays, or some kind of combination. Rehabilitation, rehabilitation, that's your milling, mill, shim, and overlay, could be a reclaim. So for a road, and it's important, though, if you're going to reclaim a road, make sure you've got halfway decent stuff underneath the road. If you've got inferior product, clay, silt, and all that, last thing you want to do is actually take that asphalt, grind it down into the silts and the clays, or dirty gravel, you know, real silty gravel, and then repave it, you're going to end up with, you know, a road that's not going to hold up. It might look good for three, four, two or three years, four or five years, but then it's going to, the running will start again. Brockway's Mills, not Brockway's, but, uh-
Parker.
Pleasant Valley Road, good example. When we started that one, that's a real good example, when we started that one, years, we didn't have a gravel pit, this was back in 1994 or '5?
Yeah.
Maybe 1996?
Early 90s.
Oh, we had enough money just to reclaim it. And that was kind of a going thing at the time. Then toward the end of getting at the Phase 6 or 7 of Pleasant Valley Roads, you know, trying to watch it, you know, it doesn't look like it's the answer. So, you know, I think we kind of then woke up, said, let's do Parker Hill Road, let's not do it as a reclaim, let's, you know, we probably pushed the crew, the highway crew did most of that, we had one, one big contract, that road's held up great. You know, Brockway's Mills, you know, another good example. But it takes, it takes investment.
It's a perfect example of maintaining a good road.
Yeah. 121 from Saxon River, Cambridge Port, that was a full reconstruction. Luckily, the state, or the town of Rockingham had $300,000 in, in right-of-way cost. The state cost is roughly $7 million. But if you drove that road before, it was horrendous. You know, I don't know if you ever drove that before it was done.
Yeah, it was.
It was horrendous. But it was, it's more than just, as a widen out, it was 20 feet before, now it's 28 feet. It was a big difference. And, but even that road, fully reconstructed, state Vermont standard suspects you got one issue on a corner. I don't know if it was a boulevard corner, whatever you want to call it, but, little sinking there. Uh, let's see. And one I've kind of added to my list is defer, well, back to reconstruction, yeah, we went right over that one. So reconstruction is knowing when, I just covered some of that, knowing when it should be reconstructed, to be honest, you know, to yourself, to taxpayers, saying this is what it needs. Doesn't mean it has to have that, you could still do a shim and overlay and buy some time, kick the can down the road a little bit, knowing that it's not going to hold up as well as it probably should. Which is basically what I'm saying is defer. So in other words, if you know it needs to be reconstructed, you could, maybe, maybe if you can do it three, four, or five years, don't do a thing to it. If you don't have the money to do it three, four, or five years, you might have to actually shim and overlay, or maybe shim and chip seal it, to buy 10 or 12 years, so you can really kick it down the road before you actually invest the money into it. And, and, you know, even if the 45 miles of road in town, you did half a mile a road a year, reconstruction, it's 90 years, so you can't do every road. It will take time. So repair concepts, number four there, according to the, you know, local roads there, it's imperative to preserve the good roads first, in other words, that's where chip seals and pavement overlays prior to, you know, prior to significant drought conditions, so really you want to do is avoid the worst first methodology. Excuse me, you know, but if you're, just put all your money into Pleasant Valley Road right now, some of the other bad roads, I've got some pictures here, I'll show you in a minute, all the good roads are going to turn in that same condition, you'll never catch up. So it's, it's not really what the taxpayers want to hear that live on those roads, but it's, it's really the, the way it should be handled. So, there is, is the worst. And item number five, those are all my, basically, I came up with all the customized costs and different methodologies of, you know, repair anywhere from defer to reclaim pavement and revert to gravel, chip seals, shim and overlay, overlay with chip seals, shim and chip seals, you know, all kinds of, all the way down to reclamation. And this is the category here, I believe I've got reconstruction with about $1.2 million a mile. And that's gone up significantly. And there's the savings, obviously, if you have your own gravel pit. See, down, down below there, those are just kind of cost indexes, I believe, just for the numbers up top, in case anybody want to know how I came up with these numbers here.
Now, on your reconstruction, if you're in the village, you didn't take into account anything to do with water and sewer under it?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, no water, no water sewer, no, no even drainage, minimal drainage pipes, but if you, even in the country, if you've got a large box culvert that needs to be completed on, say Pleasant Valley Road, so it does not include that. You know, so a few drainage pipes here and there would include that, some underdrain pipe structures. And basis of good roads, this is from our local roads as well, you know, they've got some key points down here. Spending money before rapid depreciation is money well spent. Providing good foundation is good road management. Cheaper's not always better, so that's one of those things, yeah.
What was the mix for Parker Hill and 121 for your chip seal? I see three different formulas up here, 10%, 20%?
Oh, that was 10% rubber. The chip seal, yeah, that was 10%.
That's like the standard for what you guys would like to-
No, yeah, we tried to use, 121's 20%.
No, it was 10.
It was 10.
And Parker Hill was?
10.
And so, for example, the traditional chip seal, no asphalt in it, I mean, no, no rubber in it, is, yeah, roughly 245, call it 250 per square yard, 10% rubber, 350 per square yard, and 20% rubber, 450 per square yard. So it's kind of a balance act, you know, where do you get the most bang for the dollar there? You know, I think we've had, the towns had good luck with the 10%, especially 121, a lot of traffic, it's held up well. And annual pavement maintenance budget, you know, so, the town, let's figure that a little better figure here. There we go. Okay, the annual paving budget should be roughly 100, well, actually, $103,000, no, should be actually, I did some, one of the things I'd like to do at some point is come up with a formula that says every, so that will work for any town around, you've got so many miles, times, probably roughly $10,000 per mile is unfair, is sort of a rough formula, if your road's in halfway decent shape, so 43 and a half miles, which actually, that's, I think I deducted out, Class 1, that's why that's 43 and a half, times 10,000, it's $435,000 per year, is where the town of Rockingham should be for, for road budget, for paving. And that's, but that's going to keep your roads in the state ground, in there right now, so that's not going to do your capital improvements that you want to do, so to do that, you really, you've got to start ramping it up, which is what I've got some proposed options, option 1 and 2, which we have to.
And just, to point out also, the highway budget does call for $50,000 each year for the next five years, and right now, for the FY19 budget, we're going from 252 to 300,000.
Yeah.
So which should put us on track for that number.
You know, and it's kind of strange, the numbers I started playing with initially, because I knew, I had an idea what the budget was, you know, with Mike, Shane was coming at it from probably a different direction, but we're both coming together with the same number to start with. Even though it's probably not the ideal number, but it's, it's a place to start, it's a place to start. And if you can, if the town could afford to ramp it up by 50,000 a year, it will make a difference. Capital plan, it is, I've got two options, option 1 is the most affordable plan, it pushes out potential bond at 2031, which is way down the road, and the reason for that is, you've got a bond, right now you're paying for Brockway's Mills. So I didn't feel that the town, the taxpayers, you could still do it, but I didn't feel it was the right time for another bond, to have two substantial bonds. I think Brockway's Mills may be roughly $250,000 a year, I believe, overlap that with another $250,000 or $300,000 on, on top of trying to do preservation. So, option 1 is basically preserving for the next few years until that bond is paid off for Brockway's Mills Road, and then, then you've got a couple of different options. Then you could actually then continue preserving and then start integrating some capital improvements, which you'll, I'll get to the list in a minute when we get to capital plan. Or you could then look at option 2, which is, okay, now we're ready for a bond after Brockway's Mills is paid off, to do some other work. So there's, those are the two options, basically, with option 1 being the most affordable. Couple of critical things you've got going on down the road, Route 121, you know, between Cambridge-
Davidson, no? Saxon River?
Yeah, Westminster, Gageville, yeah, Gageville, to Saxon River, 9,550 foot to the new bridge. It's, looks good now. It was reclaimed, I think, probably back in 1990, that was before I even worked with the town. They've overlaid at least twice, you know, I don't believe it's going to hold up long, Mike does not either. You know, it's going to keep breaking and falling apart, so at some point, the town's going to look at, you know, when are we going to maybe try to do something to that? One of the most heavily traveled roads in town. So I do have that in there, it's quite a ways down the road. But one thing to consider would be, when that is done, you know, you may be able to mine some of the gravel right out of the river, you know, some high-quality gravel in the river. So it's, you know, get a permit from the state, you know, try to find a little piece of land to use, you know, for gravel and processing, crushing. If not, then, then maybe that's not an option, but it is a possibility. It's Grizzle Drive, you know, I know that's been talked about a lot, it's 3,500 feet, it's a rehabilitation status. So it's, that, with that road, and a lot of Maine is new, that was completed in 2001, sewer main and the drain line should be replaced prior to reconstructing that road. Maybe sewer line could be, you know, it needs to be investigated first, maybe it could be relined, might be options there, drainage needs to really be gotten into. If people, they may complain a lot, but it's, if you drive similar roads like Mike and I drove, it's really nowhere near the, the worst road in town. A lot of people live on here, I'm not saying it's not, not a great road, but if you wanted to kick that, there's two options I've got in here, we'll get to option 1 and option 2, but option 1 really talks about kind of one more preservation, kick it out till around 2030, and option 2 talks about maybe around 2024, 2025, do nothing now, and then reconstruct, reconstruct it then. Pleasant Valley Road, you know, you're talking some, almost five miles there, I believe, you add them all up, there's only, of all the work we did, there's only one short section that was actually reconstructed, you know, maybe it was 2,500 feet. Some people might think we reconstructed Pleasant Valley Road, it was not done, that was the reclaim that I was talking about. Which, you know, in a lot of towns, depends on where you go, they'll say, we reconstructed a road, meaning a reclaim, so there, so you've got to be careful out there, but sometimes if you're talking to other towns, the way they say reconstructed, it may exactly be just a reclaim. And that's fine if you know you've got good material underneath the road. If you don't, it should be analyzed first before you reclaim it. I wouldn't recommend reclaiming Pleasant Valley Road again. At some point, you know, try to kick, kick the can down the road, if you have to, even one more time, after 2030, but eventually you'll get there.
That glass, too.
So the best thing is go right to, I was talking about two things here, let's see. $300,000 a year to start, increasing by $50,000 a year, and from that point, there are two options you can consider in the plan, we'll get to option 1, 2, and 3. There is no option 3 at this point, there could be 10 options. You know, but if you start throwing anything more than three options out there, they just get, even gets more confusing. You know, one or two options, you can take one of these options that we're looking at, like Mike and Shane were talking about a little bit before the meeting, you could tweak in one of those to what best fits. The gravel base should be verified prior to any capital improvement project, to ensure there's adequate support. It should also include projects that will be reclaimed that I talked about, like Pleasant Valley Road, like, oh, 97 to 2003. So that's six years' worth of work on that road. And test bits, that'll help determine whether reclaim will be sufficient or a full-depth reconstruction is required. And all road improvements, you know, it's good to include them in that annual town report, so it's kind of a document. So 2010, for example, when I left, if you look at that town report, you'll see 15 years' worth of improvements that were completed. So it's always, I mentioned that to Mike, it's a good document to look at, if you want to know the history from 94 to 2010, actually 2009. So that's, that's important. Capital budget should be carried over, so if the town does not have one, but it's important to set one up, so that if you're putting money away for capital improvements, you can carry, it might be $100,000 that you didn't use, but carry it over. Well, obviously, look to see if it's needed to balance the budget first. But if you don't, carry it over, stock up your salt, there's other ways you can do it. Especially if the salt's going to go up in price the next year.
You're going to be able to get it first.
What's that?
You're going to be able to get it first.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. And all road materials should meet the state Vermont specifications for construction, so that's real important. So you might be talking to a contractor that says he's got great gravel, packs, packs great, but that's, anybody that says gravel packs great, that should be a red flag that goes up, thinking, well, why is it packed great? That may be because it's got a lot of silt in it. You put that gravel in there, a lot of silt on the road and pave over it, and even, even pavement is not, it's not impervious, water will percolate through pavement. And then it does that, especially in the springtime, you get the fluctuation, you get the cracking that's happened slowly on, on the road surfaces, and it will slowly destroy the road, and then you've got the overweight trucks that probably sneak through, but Mike doesn't see, or ignore the permits. Things do happen. And, yeah, I mentioned that in the town plan, yeah. So here's a sample of chip seal photos, I'm going to look at some sample photos first, and then I'll get into some of the proposed work. So this one here, you'll recognize heading toward Cambridge Port. That's the firehouse on the end. This was chip sealed 2010, the photo was taken 2015, five years later. Here's Village Street in Charlestown, which I thought was always, you know, it was traditional, there's no rubber on that one. They, you know, straight, you know, two dollars, the cheaper mix, held up great, still is. Here's the application, this was a project they worked on 2015 up in Sharon, Vermont, so it is, this is 300-degree, 10% rubber, asphalt being sprayed down, and there's the stone machine right behind it. As soon as they can, that's basically, you know, looking one way, turning, turning the camera, looking the other way, taking a shot of that, and then it's rolled right after that. And this, for example, is a photo of the section of road in 2015 before the project, that's the same project right there, after. And I've watched that road the last couple of years, this was, for three years, it's held up great. Some of the real bad sections, I don't believe this was one of them, but there was some that were rather worse than that, actually, we had a- We had to, had them dig it out, put decent gravel base in there, put, uh, and then base pavement, and then the overlay went right over the top, and then, uh, well, first the shim, overlay and chip seal. And if you're ever up in River Road and, you know, you want, that's, you go across the metal bridge and take a right, you'll go through a half a mile section of River Road, which is that, then it goes, turns into the chip seal section. And, uh, so, this was a recommendation, my recommendation was reclaim the road, reclaim it, cause it had decent material underneath. And I did analysis for them, I said, you could get by with a, I guess, fix the area, box things out, uh, shim overlay and chip seal, and your cost per twenty-five years is gonna be about the same. And right now, I think it's tracking that, it might actually be tracking better. This is, uh, Rockingham, uh, proposed projects for twenty twenty-two that I know about. Downtown Mill, shim and overlay, two thousand and eighteen, looking down Westminster Street. Another section of Westminster Street there. Depending what happens here, this could be kicked down the road, you know, this is, to be talked about, I don't believe any decision has been made on what's gonna happen on paving yet. But either do nothing or shim it, buy some time. You know, shim and chip seal and buy some time. This is Grizzle Drive, same thing, another shot of Grizzle Drive there. Uh, this was, this was, uh, chip seal back in two thousand and three, uh, it's fifteen years later. Uh, there's still some remnants of the chip seal, but now's a good time to, to preserve this road. That's pure circle. This one, uh, this was not a section that was reclaimed. Turn a corner, so if you go up the road here, turn a corner, turn a right up here, this is that section there, which always had some movement to it, it was, never, never was reconstructed. That should be, may reclaim, I don't think we reclaimed it.
Didn't do anything with it.
No, kept overlaying it. So, that, at this point, would be, um, overlaying chip seal, preserve that.
You're saying a half inch overlay?
That one here, no, at least an inch.
At least an inch, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for me, I'm not sure what I've got in here, I have to look. Maybe it'd be a shim, maybe a shim and one inch after that, and then chip seal. This is still in great shape, uh, recircle. Yeah, you've got to hunt to find a crack, and the road's fifteen years old. So, I think it's, I think the chip seal really preserved it.
Right.
You know, it's, it kept, it's kept your pavement from oxidizing and cracking. You know, it's sealed the top, no moisture getting down through there. And it's another recircle extension. Shady Lane, this, this has had some, some movement to it. Built on hillside, uh, same type of quality construction as the rest of it. You know, it's given a little bit there, but that could be preserved. That would, that would need a probably half inch shim and a chip seal. Tower Road, it's also got some, some distress on the left, left edge, one up the hill, mainly in this section here, so I probably took the photo in the worst spot. But that would have to be, yeah, one inch shim and a chip seal, preserve that. Victoria Drive's holding up great. Uh, one of the roads is horrendous. Uh, this is a little bit better photo than one on the cover, but one of the, one of the things that, you know, that Springfield didn't actually, they had to, like, well, they, they put a two inch base down a road that was about in that condition, chip seal, and it's still holding up fairly well. Cause this road needs, it needs it, but it doesn't have the traffic at this point to warrant four hundred thousand dollars of pavement. So, what I've got in here.
Is that more, they put down a three quarter base?
Yeah, three quarter, right, they put down two inches of three quarter base, chip seal right over it. Yep. That's another photo of the same road, Rockingham Road. And let's see, now capital, let's see, capital projects, but these don't, these, they don't start till twenty twenty-one. The reason for that is, there's a number of roads we're looking at preserving first, before you start putting in capital. Hartley Hill Road, uh, this one, not very long, it's a short section, horrendous shape. I've got that one plugged in, the dollars that I've got plugged in, the, the road program is with town crew doing it. And, uh, Michael was seeing that one. Great till twenty thirty, right?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah. Alright, then after that, after twenty twenty-two, we have the Elaine, another short. Uh, you know, I think these are small enough, the crews, you know, crews should be capable of doing, what, that's, uh, less than ten foot mile, not a big project. I don't think we wanna give them all up in two bigger projects, but something like that is capable of doing it. This one, you probably could lift up a fair amount here, you could probably remove the pavement, excavate as needed, but I would look at picking that road up where you can as well. That'll save on excavation. Avenue B, right here in Bell's Falls, it's twenty twenty-three, that's about point oh four miles, it's horrendous going from Center Street to the corner here. Uh, Front Street, let's see. Oh, excuse me, that's not the corner, uh, Front Street, that's one to the corner. Uh, Front Street is also another section that's horrendous, that's going from, same thing, Center Street right to the, the corner right here, point oh five miles.
When you're talking about doing this with a town crew, what are you talking about, they, you're not gonna have them do the paving and everything?
No, no, no paving. Just excavation, gravel preparation, you know, and put gravel.
You'd have a contractor come and do the paving.
Right, and it doesn't have to be them either, the numbers I've got in here.
No, I know, I'm just, just trying to get it clear what you're coming across with that.
Right. Uh, okay, I've gotta pick on the shorter ones with the town crew, Wheeler Drive. Well, Mike, Mike would, he's been pushing to get this done for a long time. Uh, maybe it'll finally get done? Not for a while, let's see, that's twenty twenty-three, so that's still a few years down the road. But that's in horrendous shape. You know, there's probably gonna be a little engineering work to figure out what's, how to make this work here. It's a little bit better toward, toward School Street, condition of the road. You've got Bradley Way, that's, that's really starting to crumble. That may be one you could test pits, see what you've got, possibly reclaim, pick, pick it up as much as you can, six inches of gravel, then four inches of pavement. That's, that's the numbers I've got in here now. Once you do the test pits, it may not be that way. And then you've got Web Terrace, you know, basically from here up around the corner, uh, until we get to the, just past the parking lot. That's, uh, but I'm saying thing here, you may go add it, you're not gonna be able to add six inches gravel here, you'll have to taper that in, but as you start going up around the corner, you maybe'll add a little gravel. And you got Blake Street, uh, this is from the garage going uphill toward the corner, near Grizzle Drive, right around the corner, point oh nine. This one I've got with engineering, so be contracted out. This one here, because if you do that one, you might wanna do this one at the same time. Bird Street two, that's one from Pine Street up.
You have Bird and Blake, may have, um, the water and sewer projects will have, are looking to go out to bid later on this spring, so those could happen within the next twenty, you know, next twelve months.
Yeah, and if, if possible, you try to tie the two together, but this needs enough work to, I don't see that there's enough in the budget to push this way up. You're better off having them do the projects and then, uh, patch it, you know, go out to patch it. Uh, maybe you could drag him up through there, the road's in sad enough shape, you don't wanna probably put too much effort into it. Uh, Park Street, this is one I've been, I think the town's been talking about doing for the last ten years, another short section, about point oh eight. That's right off of Blake Street, that's the first one left, goes around the corner. And you've got Barker Street. This one, you might build, you might build a shim and overlay, this is, uh, you know, it's got a lot of movement to it, I would look at that first if possible. And let's see, Granger Street, that's the one going from Route five down around the corner to the town line, which is probably right around here. Uh, then you turn into Westminster. So, only about a point, maybe it might be further up.
Nothing's been done with that, it's, uh, early eighties, maybe?
Yeah. And that, that, the way is, it's not moving a lot, you may get by with a two inches, you know, work together with Westminster and put two inches right on it, walk away from it. You know, there are, those decisions can be made down the road, but for now, I've got, you know, point oh three, I've got it built in there as reconstruction. It's eight years down the road, Granger Street two, that's then going around the corner from the paper, uh, I'm not sure who's in here now, but, roughly with town line up to, uh, top bill here. And that one, you also may be able to do a bill shim and overlay. And Pleasant Street Sax River, uh, I'm sure, if you haven't heard many complaints on that, you probably will soon. It is starting to ride pretty rough out there. Uh, but something, whatever you do out there, it's, it's good to let, have any kind of plan, let the village trustees know, are they gonna, look at upgrading water lines out there, now, you know, they've got eight years to do it. You know, not, not wait till twenty twenty-seven and put a new water main in after roads rebuild. You know, those are things that the plan will try to avoid.
I don't think it can wait that long.
You don't think it will?
Without doing something.
You may have, that's eight years, you may have to do a shim. And that's, shim, even if you did a chip seal, it'll hold up.
Yeah.
Rockingham Road, and this is on the Sax River end. That's, this was a pretty good sized shim we did on that.
Lasted a lot longer than what we told the people it was.
Right.
Where does Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street stop?
Uh, right above Bellevue, just above Bellevue.
Right, yeah. Let's see, then you have Industrial Drive, that's got a lot of wear on that. That one, I think, will last till twenty-seven. It's not, not in great shape, the industry isn't here, will wait that long.
Yeah, we're watching.
A lot of these, I, I, you know, I've got photos taken of all the roads of town that we've done, so a lot of this kinda shows you that there is need out there. The photos will, they may go, you know, on one report, a couple of reports, you guys, or these photos I've got. And then I'll, then I'll have a disc, that'll go on those, and if you guys want a disc with all the photos, uh, of all the roads, that won't be in a report, but it'll be on a CD. Spencer Drive, that's probably, that one here is fairly decent shape, you probably can reclaim it. At this point, you may still be able to save it, that's, that's one that's really, you know, take, worth taking a look at, see what you can do. Eric's Cove, that's not, it's shorter now than it was since the town removed some of it, it goes to roughly the,
Right there.
Yeah, right there, about, but it's pretty horrendous shape. It's kicked out down the road, twenty twenty-eight. And if possible, the town maybe will do that one. M-Tech Lane, and, uh, that's another one, it's, it looks like it was built properly, it just hasn't been paved.
Would you pave, would you pave that Eric's Cove road when you do it?
Would I pave this? Oh.
I mean, it's, I haven't been down there lately, but I know when you used to down there, it's. Just a big patch, but it needs to be. I'm just curious, I mean.
Yeah.
Something's gotta be done with it.
I think it's worth sending a memo out to the people who live right, I think it's the only one house.
I think there's all.
Communicate to the people, that's what I would do, here's what we're proposing, talk to them and, uh, see what kind of feedback you got. I think it doesn't hurt probably to go up here, but maybe you could shorten it up some, at least pass the driveway, cause you wanna get away from Route five.
Actually, what I was gonna do is shorten it up to second driveway, come back another couple hundred feet.
Yes, I mean, shorten up a little bit.
And then just push our box over into the driveways and hopefully buy us some time.
Yeah, oh, we put some asphalt on it, yeah. And that's, M-Tech, I just talked about that one, M-Tech is in better shape than Level Drive, which is, this is Level Drive right here. Which goes down to the turnaround here, comes back out through. Meeting House Road, that's, that's got a lot of wear and tear. Uh, maybe you can reclaim that, you know, take some test pits here, possible reclaim or elevate it, four inches of pavement. Like I said, uh, check the test pits and the quality of what you've got underneath the road. School Bus Depot, that's one we'll get a chance to talk about, but it, it might be one we can reclaim and leave as gravel. Uh, and when you do that, you probably have to still add gravel. You know, cause the quality of what you have, have underneath there may not be good enough to hold up in grade. And Upper Meadows Road, it's another one you may be able to reclaim, leave as gravel, you know, there's maybe half dozen houses on there. And Alden Hill Road, that's got a lot of wear and tear out it, a lot of movement. That looks like, you know, probably reconstruction, it's not very long, point one nine, probably with engineering and contractor. Same thing as Randall Hill Road, that's got, that's got more.
That's real bad.
That's real bad, yeah, and that's twenty twenty-nine, still a long ways down the road. And Front Street three, I know that wall's been talked about, it's, it's right around here. It's a matter of funding and whether, twenty twenty-nine, or twenty thirty, it'll be here before we know it, it may last that long. But it's, it's, needs to be on the slate, on the horizon. And then you've got Hydel, it's in pretty tough shape.
Is that the house that came down?
Yeah.
It's from over there.
Oh, it's not there anymore?
It came down last week.
Took it down.
Okay.
Flying one.
Yeah.
Fork fell down.
And then Playground Road, there's a lot of, you know, this is one the town crew probably could do, but we tried it once, but maybe it didn't go deep enough.
I guess not, a lot of clay down there.
Yeah.
Probably should use some geotextile or something.
And here's a section of one twenty-one, they're talking about point nine miles, basically from town line all the way in. This is close to the Hall Cover Bridge right here. So, starting around twenty thirty-one, maybe with the river gravel, possibilities and station money.
Yeah, what's the condition of Westminster, piece to the, to the river? Just wondering if it makes sense to coordinate with Westminster.
Well, they're, they're in pretty good shape, Westminster, yeah.
Yeah, they'd reget it after I ran some of it, got washed out.
And you could do it all in one year, or maybe break it up in two years, a lot of that depends on the erosion laws at the time, rules at the time, you might be better off to segment it out. You know, maybe, maybe you put a, you know, really good base on it. Uh, a good three inch base, the next year you do the other part, three inch base and you put two inches right over the top. So, it should have at least five inches of mix on this road here. For example, the, uh, section that the state did, it's six inches of mix. It's actually six inches of sand, two feet of gravel, six inches of pavement. Uh, these are all the inventory, these are right, right out of the report here. So, alphabetical order here, all the way down through for seven pages. Then you get into, uh, the no maintenance categories. And, uh, let's see, that's two pages of that, routine maintenance, preventative. Uh, three pages, well, almost three. Rehabilitation, and here's where, for example, you'll see the, the scoring. So, for example, Main Street Sax River, rehabilitation, six points it's got, uh, so it's three for traffic, three for importance. Uh, so that's Main, Route one twenty-one, all terraced, same six points, square, six points, it looks like, is that eight? Oh, six, okay. As long as, however you look at it, as long as you're consistent on how you do it, it really doesn't matter, it'll keep going to the top. Down the road, Lower Barton's Hill, it's, has, I don't think any work has been done to that for years. Here's your Grizzle Drive. Church Place, you know, it's got a lot of ones that we've just looked at on capital here. And we've got rehabilit, it's still part of rehabilitation. Reconstruction, there's your Pleasant Valley Road. Uh, not all of it, segments one and five, and some of them you'll see up here as well. Pleasant Valley Road, let's see.
Right below the Barton's Hill.
Oh, okay, same points, four, okay, right there, yeah. But those are, you know, three segments that are pretty long, there's, some of it can be saved. And reconstruction, Meeting House Road, Pleasant Street Sax River, Randall Hill Road, you know, this, slow, seven point seven miles. So, like I said, even if you did half a mile a year, there's fifteen years of reconstruction, not counting the rehabilitation.
Yeah, seven, we said, today's dollars, one point two million for a mile?
Per mile, yeah.
That we're talking.
So, there's ten million.
And how, how much do you think that increases every year, five percent?
Three percent, on the average, yeah. Unless you get a, another spike in asphalt oils and all that, then. So, you might have, the overall economy may stay at three percent for construction, but you might have a four or five percent for a couple of years, three years for, you know, for road related projects.
No, none of these factor in any of the roads that have to, we have to deal with the new Clean Water Act.
No.
Rules, so, Mike, about how many percentage of our roads are gonna be impacted that, do you think?
I don't know, I can't tell you a lot.
In mainly the gravel, you think, or?
Is it what?
Mainly the gravel or also?
Just be clean and stoned. You're talking about the hydrologically connected segments?
Yeah.
A lot need to be done.
But I've got some contingencies on a one point two million built in there, where, you know, the whole, if you do a mile section of road, chances are you don't have a mile on both sides that need stone line dishing.
Right.
So, you know, for the most part.
That's the grade of the road.
Basic stuff, yeah, that's not great, for one twenty-one, you won't need a lot. Maybe around the Culver Inlets.
I'm glad you take it.
So, let's see, this is kind of what I've got put together is the, the overall financial plan proposed right now. You know, this is your, your basic maintenance for two thousand and eighteen. Uh, some of this is worth, you know, I don't know if you wanna dive into it now, but you're probably better off with Mike and I and Shane, spend a little time on it. Massage in that, see if you can get, like I said, there's different things you can do. You know, a lot of various options, but it's worth.
Well, the part with Westminster Street in there, that's.
Down here.
That's no more.
You're talking Earl Church, Earl Church Street, right?
Yeah, so that, okay, so that, that you could take out.
School Streets to the Square, that would.
School to the Square.
Be removed too, right? We're gonna redo this, or what, what is this here?
Yeah, yeah, that could come out.
Well, I mean, it's.
We're gonna do it.
It's gonna be doing, but I mean, it's still factored in, it's a cost is being spent into that 2018.
Right.
Right.
But it's already scheduled and funded.
So I didn't see the bid.
I'm saying this says mill shim and overlay, but we're about to. It's a separate project, right?
No, this, this one here, number three, would be what, I believe, I haven't seen it, but the bid you just approved earlier.
That's right.
Would be section number three, section number two may not be in it, is that right?
No, it's not.
Okay, so this would not be in that, so that leaves a little, you know, some extra funds for something else. But I believe, substituting that, I believe you're doing, out of Old Terrace?
Yeah.
Correct?
Front Street, yeah.
So that's why, so Old Terrace I've got.
So we are gonna chip seal the Rockingham Street up there?
No, just over, uh, mill and overlay.
This is the, you know, first initial, this is the initial draft of it, we, we need to go over it a bit. I mean, one of the things that doesn't necessarily have there in year one is, is much in Saxon's River. You recall that there was a, a, quite a few people signed a petition, and there is work that can be done in, in Saxon's River that we should look at. The board kind of made some level of promise to those people, so something we need to look at.
So the, the square to William Street, .24 miles, chip seal 20%. For Rockingham Street.
Can't see where you're looking.
Right in the middle there, Rockingham Street.
Section one.
Square to Williams.
Yeah, that's chip sealed, right?
Right.
Yeah. To preserve what was put down.
So that's happening, I mean, I'm.
That's something we have to sign.
Because that.
All these.
Section, in my opinion.
It needs to be chip sealed now.
To be preserved.
Yeah, preserve it, that's, that's a different bid than what you approved earlier.
Right.
Right.
But, yeah, there's, so you've got this 100,000 to work with, but now actually it's 100, almost 130,000.
Well, no, the real numbers, just so you know, after the approval of, of the, the square project, that was, you know, after taking out the, 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 the the grant funds, the carry forward money, we've got, and, long story short, with the $300,000 we have available FY19. And 140, we have now, basically, we have $440,000 that is available for paving between now and July of next year. So we've got officially $440,000 to spend. We do have an addition.
What's happening here?
What's that?
Including what's happening here, he said, or no?
Well, he's got 554,000, we only have 440, it's still a lot of money, we got 440,000 to spend. We, there is 50,000, that was just put in the capital reserve fund, I don't recommend touching that, but could, so that could bring us to 490,000. So we may need to just adjust this sum, you know, to.
Need to talk.
To reflect what we've actually got in the pocket.
Some of these don't really need to be done.
Yeah, I mean, this is sort of the, in the best case scenario.
Well, we're in the area, let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you don't have to follow this, you know, this is just, by looking at the, what you found, this is the best.
And for example, at Westminster Street 2, probably get by with overlay if you wanted to. You know, it's in better shape than the rest of it, overlay it, one inch, walk away from it. But you may not have that available either.
Right.
And is there still change, structure, I mean, paving grant, is that still a possibility, or did you?
We have that.
We got it.
We got it.
Eligible for this next year.
So is that above and beyond a 440?
Yes, it is.
Right, okay.
I'm saying after the square, after the project with square and Old Terrace, we've got $440,000 available.
So also the top one would be removed as well, because that's in there.
That's going to the project, yes.
That's part of this, there's another.
Yeah, we need to, we need to spend some time going over this.
Yeah.
Even this was done prior to him knowing.
Sure. And the true numbers are really the bid, I can have all the numbers in the world here, but the bid really is what counts.
Do we have a cost for Pleasant Street? And what would be recommended?
No, just other, what he ever put on there, I don't, I couldn't find it.
We, 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 we looked at what he had done already, and we estimated Pleasant Street, roughly $100,000.
Just to overlay.
I think we did shim, yeah, shim overlay chip seal, 100 grand.
We'd want to see if they have any plans for water.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, with that bond they got out there, I don't know.
Yeah, we talked about that, that's why we need to sit down and talk about it, we need to figure something out. If they're not gonna do nothing for 10 years, then yeah, we should do it. Roughly two years down the road, they're gonna rip it back up, throw it in.
Right.
So I don't know what's involved with the, I don't know about a water project, but I don't know what's involved with that wastewater project, I don't think anybody does it this way.
Right.
I know Ever and I, for years, have wanted to do a stormwater upgrade out there, but just, money has never been there to do it, we've done a little bit. I don't know what kind of shape it's in. We could pave it tomorrow, and then next week we're gonna have to dig it up because the road collapsed, that's the worst thing.
Right now, or the way it is right now, Saxon River Main Street would be next year. You might have a little bit of shifting, some of this here.
Yes, we talked about.
And that's, you know, once you guys talk about it, then we can meet, we can massage it. And then 20, you know, the big ones here. Brockus Mills Road, just it'd be nice to chip seal that, 20% rubber.
Yeah, it would.
Preserve that as well, hold that in good shape. That's picking up from the bridge, I would do right over the bridge.
Why 20% there, not 10%?
You got a little bit more steep hills on this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a question for Allstate's Ask Right.
And when you do start looking at the timeline, I mean, do you get into the point with this, to go back to the, the state upgrades that have to be done? I mean, say you do the steep section, then you have to do the stone ditching, correct? Yeah, so I mean, you have to factor that in too.
When you do any reconstruct, you have, that's the time to do it, yeah.
Yeah, but not for chip sealing.
Not for chip sealing, just reconstruction.
Reconstruction, yeah. And you've got stone line ditches, I'll, you know, face down the section.
But it needs to be, that already has the big stone.
That's pretty much done, except for one small section that was.
And that was a blend of, I think, I don't know, I think you've had good luck with it, it's a blend of the bigger, it's sort of a combination of a seven inch minus.
Dense grade.
Dense grade and three, three inch minus sort of blended together, so when you put it down, you know, it's cleaner the greater, so.
That was before the psychologically.
No, I think it's still something you can argue and say, well, we've got something that's not washing.
Right.
We've got our own mix, special mixed blend that the grader can go down through there and clean it, and it's still there. It's got vegetation on top of it. I, I've mentioned that to him a couple of times, but I don't know if you understood it, but.
Well, that, that could all change too.
Yeah.
Is there like a study on the longevity between 10% and 20%? If it's $15,000 more a mi, a mile, is it incredibly last five times?
Yeah, I've asked Ron Macauska that, he's given me different numbers, you know, he.
He's with all two.
He's Allstate's Ask, yeah, he's.
Rubber stuff's kind of new, huh?
He says the more, the more rubber, the longer it'll last. But I don't, I don't think I've got to the point where it was maybe like 14 years for the 20%, 12 years maybe for the 10%. And maybe seven for the, the no, no rubber. So it almost, you know, if those are the numbers I'm hearing, it's almost like you're better off the 10% if it works.
That's why I asked.
You know, and I, those, just by numbers I remember, he told me before, it never jumped at me to spend the extra dollar for square yard to go there with 20 unless you really need it.
What's the state of Vermont doing, like when they did the five there a few years, well, so, long years ago? What were they doing, any idea?
When they did like.
When they did some chip sealing around here, I think it was Springfield, was it, or Winter?
Oh, the interstate is sort of like a, it's not quite chip sealed, but it is kind of, it's a machine, they call it a.
It's almost like a missing place.
Yeah, but it's a machine laid chip seal.
Yeah.
Paid.
Right.
It's that same type of process, they, they spray asphalt down and they're paying right over it. There's a certain terminology to use for it.
Yeah.
It's not, but I'm sure they're paying six or seven dollars per square yard, plus traffic control.
Right.
You know, so it's a good application.
Yeah.
If you've got the dollars.
If you've got the dollars, yeah.
Yeah, it just, looks like it's held up pretty well.
Yeah.
It's fairly thin, but you're not going all the way up to the shoulder.
Right.
And what are we looking at for gravel that's available? We don't have it, right?
Not very much.
Wasn't that what, we're gonna do some blasting?
For the stone, for the ditches.
Right, well, it's in the budget for next year.
Was there more on Derby Hill, what was that?
That's it.
We've got 60 grand in the budget.
Certainly could do that, I mean, it's, we can make a dense grade use as a sub base.
Yeah, if you've got years, you're ready, right now you're looking at preservation for a few years, so you've got years to gear up.
That's right.
You know, if you, if Derby Hill works out, I guess I would try some experimental blasting and some smaller crushing up there to see if it's the right product. You know, have the guy test the ledge.
You know, we're gonna, in order to make the seven minus, we're gonna get a two and a half dense grade byproduct of that, so that would be something to try.
Yeah.
Get it tested.
Yeah. So there's a number, number, you know, for example, Lower, Lower Barnesville Road, that's, yeah, that's where Sue grew up.
And you. More or less.
But that one is starting, that's a good example, it's been 20 years, it's starting to crumble.
I like it bumpy, keeps the traffic down.
You want to preserve it, you know, you know, they've got 2019.
I like the speed bump.
So, you know, probably should be done this year, but Sue's on the board, we bumped out of here.
No, I don't want it. They'll fly even faster.
Upper Barnesville, you want to preserve those, and you know, this, so basically I've got them all, without going through detail by detail. I'm gonna jump right down to the capital plan. A few years there. Okay, so it is a map, so basically this is a victorial of distant condition grading, color coded. Reconstruction is, it's maroon color, rehabilitate yellow, green is preventative. And when you start talking about light blues and the dark blues over here, a lot better tape. So that's, you know, from, from worst to good, worst to best. And that's, this was the village one here. So that's kind of a good, you know, overall schematics, you know, where do we stand? Then you get down to the capital. This is the option one, is the more affordable option. And so right across the top, you've got, for example, 2019 budget, roughly I had in here $300,000. The 175, this might need a little massaging, that's what the budget for came from. And the work that's gonna be done is on those other sheets. When you get to capital, these, these three, first three years are looking at preservation. Capital won't start till you get to Hartley, let's see, Hartley Hill Road, that's, and I've got two years up here. The top one is a budget, budget year, so 2020, 2022 is your budget year, and 2021 would be your summer construction. So, in the years past, I used to just put one number up there, but it could be confusing, depends on how you look at it. Identified. So not a lot of capital for the summer of 2021, not much really for even 2022, we're still in a kind of preservation mode. And we're starting to ramp it up here, over the next couple of years, not, not even much until you really hit 2025. On the, on the left, you'll see the capital provision that I talked about on the pictures. Starting with Hartley Hill Road, Hatfield, Avenue B, Front Street, Wheeler, Bramley and Webb, Blake Bird Park. Let's see, that's $430,000. See if that makes sense.
Add up pretty much.
Oh, that's five, I thought that was a three, that looks like five. Yeah, 514,000. And as these go, basically the reason this is more 514, it's 480 right here, I've got the cost escalator built in. And the cost escalators are on a bottom here, using 3% starting in 2020. So 3% 2020 going up, and you know, by 3%, so those are cost escalators. So when you're talking, this 514 is, is actually, let's see.
430.
$430,000, 880 times, is that right? Don't try to skip across here, yeah. 430, that's 480. 43880, times the factor. Times 1.194, gives you the 514. And same thing on this one here, 572, times 1.23. So that does have the cost escalators, it gives you kind of a truer picture of what the capital projects will, will be. The program doesn't allow you to really build in the cost escalators for your annual, annual maintenance. So, but I've got some numbers that are a little bit heavy going in. Asphalt, I've got $80 a ton, so usually probably, probably 65, maybe 70, you'll be, more than that, well, downtown you're gonna be more.
Yeah.
So, but if you're talking back country road.
That's a pretty good number.
$80 should be more than, you know, per ton of asphalt, eighty. But on the average. And this option here, let's go back down one. Doesn't start any capital projects until, I mean, big, big bonding projects until you get way out. So it's borrowing $1 million for the first phase of Route 121. One set, 1.7 for the second phase. And then if you wanted to jump right into it, you can stretch Grizzle Drive right after that, and then you're talking $500,000 there. Nope, not that, nope, $2 million, sorry about that, $2 million. The escalators are, the, the place is over here, the $1 million, times your capital recovery formula for five years. This, these are kind of quicker payments, you gotta get it done, instead of stretching it out, $130,000 a year. For that one, a $1.7 million, five year payments, $220,000 a year, is your 220 right there. The $2 million for Grizzle Drive, excuse me, that's 3%, sorry, those are 10 years, sorry about that. I had, I toyed with it five years, didn't seem to work out. Then you're stretching things way out, so they are 10 years, there's your factor for the 10 year payments. Grizzle Drive actually, the first payment would be off the chart, off the 15 year chart. So that's that option, this is probably the most affordable, because you're going from 300 to 375, 410.
That's paving and gravel, is that right?
This is.
Because our paving, we're looking at 50,000 per year for paving, increased by 50, so that's gravel expense as well.
And what I've got is not exactly 50, it's, it's kind of in that ballpark, you know, this first jump is 3, this 75,000. Then 410, 450. I don't see. And $700,000, this is with a.
75.
That's right, so if you take that out, you're talking, you know, 525, because that's grant coming in, 700,000.
75.
No, that's not correct, that would be $700,000, the reason I've got that, that big jump, that's your Brockway's Mill is being paid off. So if, if the town wants to choose to take that savings and put it into paving, it's something that the board would have to consider, if they want to stay with that. The 175 is addition.
So our next, I mean, so that projected our next paving grant would be in 2022?
Not in this option, no, this option two, you'll see that, this option is not till way 2031. Because this option, I've, I've got, taking care of these smaller capital projects first. Some of those aren't small either, some of it, $700,000, that's.
That's not small.
It's not small. You know, here's another $700,000 on Alden Hill and Randall, both together. Option two, so we'll pan down to that one. This is where you could actually do a 1.6 billion dollar bond, because it's all being paid off. And then you'll start your payments at $207,000 on 1.6 billion for 10 years. This would be for, if you wanted to hold on, don't touch Grizzle Drive at all. For example, maybe five years or so, and say now we're gonna take care of it, the sewer and the drainage should be completed, then you'll start it, be done with it. So that's, that's where that comes into account. So it's, it's kind of reshuffling things, it's. Let's see if that's, because that's by there.
So in addition to what we've been putting in for the paving money each year, we should be increasing into a capital fund too, to prep for what we have to do. be increasing into a capital fund too, to prep for what we have to do down the line for reclaiming construction?
It may depend on where we are with unrestricted fund balance. You know, whatever is available, put that away. Or it could be a, a separate warrant, or article every year whether or not to put more money into that, but my sense is you just throw, put it into the budget as a transfer to the, um, the capital fund.
Yeah, the fund that we just created this last year.
That is not only to deal with these, but also in a, you know, in a pinch, uh, natural disaster, something like that, you have money set aside for, for roads. Things will happen.
Any further questions? A lot to digest.
That was awesome.
I gotta say, we suggested we hold on to that study of all the numbers, and I guess there's no way you're gonna look at that, but if you're doing time, we get into the budgets, we, we can look at those numbers and then with whatever money we got, that we can maybe pick one of those and say, okay, let's sort it this way.
Great.
Yeah. It gives you something to shoot at, you know, whereas if you go in there and just say, well, put fifty grand in there, I mean, what are you gonna get done with that? I mean. The only other option, you've got some mega bucks or the mega millions, and hopefully you had to go in it.
Yeah. That's tough. You know, Springfield Buckets is finally getting up, they're close to where they need to be. Right now they're nine hundred thousand dollars. But they've, okay, they've got double your miles. They've got ninety, ninety-two miles a road, and you're forty-five.
Double population almost.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, not, yeah, not quite.
Almost.
Yeah, about, yeah, just about double the population. But their roads overall, in, by, to twenty thirty, they've got probably thirty million dollars worth of work in twenty thirty, and that's increasing up to a million if they stay like that, and then increasing a five percent after the million, you know, every year. So try to increase it a little bit more than the cost of living, or the cost of construction.
We're, we're gonna huddle up and talk, uh, for the next meeting, sort of make a presentation as to what roads need to be done.
This year.
And go out to bid as soon as possible, uh, to get it done this, this construction year. Again, whatever money is not spent in this year's budget can be, uh, carried forward into, after July ones. Like we did this last year, which was only roughly twelve thousand left over from last year.
Okay, any further, further questions? And so we. When do we get to look forward to the gravel road one? Next couple months?
Yeah, that's, this guy don't probably, yeah, two, three months, four months, I don't know. Got most of them evaluated. And actually, that's the good thing about the Mike and his gravel pits and having those gravel pits. Your quality of gravel roads in this town are far superior to a lot of other roads. You know, and, uh, you know, they're, you know, good job grading and good job with, you know, you know, and I know he doesn't care, watch, say, Mike, go at it, he was on the gravel. No, he keeps them under, under tight string, I know that. Mike, forget it, he's a great operator. And, uh, use it when you need it, but not overuse it. He's got last. But winter sand, one of the other critical things, uh, is don't always go on low bid on winter sand, cause if you go with kind of a silty winter sand, years of work putting down silty winter sand, you'll end up, it's all going into the roads. And then that means all that, you know, it's slowly building roads up into the kind of silty content, so it's really important that it stays with clear.
Good example of that was Hartley Hill. You go, when you hit the West Minnesota Line, that they have all that, and it was slimy as all.
Yeah.
That's stone dust.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was rough up there.
And we've had a pretty good mud season this year, thank goodness.
What's that?
Pretty good mud season this year. The roads are held up.
That's the, that's testing quality of gravel right there.
Right.
The, the seminar that Peter and I went to on select, for select board members, um, they had the gentleman from the highway department talk to us, and he said, cheaper is not always better, so.
All right, thank you, Everett.
Appreciate it, Everett.
All right, moving on. Finance office, Ron. Fiscal year twenty nineteen budget status report. So we are getting towards the end, hard to believe.
What's that?
Fiscal year's coming, coming to an end, it's hard to believe. What are we, about seventy percent, somewhere around that, more than that?
We're seventy-five percent calendar wise. And if you look at the total expenditures, we're a little less than eighty-two percent. Now recognizing that some of these expenditures were like the debt service and so forth, we're not gonna be paying much for the next three months. So you can't sort of do a formula here and try to calculate what we're looking to be in. And revenues, we're, we're at ninety.
Thanks.
We're ninety-seven percent on the revenues. I guess I'll leave it for questions.
All right. I had a couple, I have to look through my notes here.
Hopefully I came better prepared.
What, that fire department charge, that was the, I'm assuming that was the water that went in, correct? The water well is two thousand thirty-five. Charges of service? No, that's not what that'd be. What is that?
Which page, I'm sorry?
It says charges for services, minus two thousand thirty-five for the fire department charges.
What page?
I'm sorry, that's, um, two out of thirty-two in the town general fund. What is? What is that?
That is actually a negative. It's charged against income, that's why you see negative income. It was, quite honestly, I'm really not sure what that is. It was made in July of last year. It's called cumulative adjustment. You know, it sounds like it was part of an adjustment. So it's been there quite a while. But I am trying to research that.
Under the revenues on page, uh, three, probably already answered that, seeing I'm just on the board. You had, um, miscellaneous income of seventy-four thousand two hundred bucks.
Yeah.
What was that?
Okay, seventy-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, top of the page, top, third page.
It's, it's like a catch-all. If we get, let's say we get a check for thirty thousand dollars, and we wanna get it into the bank, but we don't know where it should be coded to, we'll put the, you know, credit the money to that miscellaneous account until such time as we can find out where it really should go. So it is quite a bit of ins and outs. Some of the miscellaneous stuff that's in there is truly miscellaneous income. Give you an example, we had a twenty-two thousand dollar credit to income in July, we cleared it in September. So sometimes it takes several months just to figure out where it should be. Plus, if you recall, in September, uh, that's when Nikki, I guess, left, right?
No.
Or was getting ready to leave. So some of this stuff may not have been cleaned up during July and August, cause she was trying to get the more important stuff done.
You also sold, you sold a bunch of, uh.
I know you mentioned it once before, and I think there's an insurance claim or something that you mentioned too that come in, I, it just, it's a, it's a large number, that's why I just picked it out.
Right.
And under the finance on the page four, too, there's, uh, three items there at the bottom, other professional service, and bank reconciling items, what is? I, I assume that twelve thousand seven hundred was when, uh, NIMRIC was in until Ron got, got on board, I'm thinking. I think I remember you mentioning about that.
Twelve thousand.
I mean, it wasn't budgeted, so consequently, that's probably what it is.
It, it's for Cynthia. She's one of the, uh. You know, people from NIMRIC who helped us out with the financial, um, and, you know, work while Nikki was in a process of leaving. And then there was a gap from, you know.
Yeah, I, I figured that was what it was. That's what, just the NIMRIC.
Yeah.
I figured that's what it was, yeah.
Yeah, we reclassed it on the finance department.
Page five, another one of those other professional, under professional services. I think out the ones that have got a, got a huge percentage increase in them, like that one's three hundred and two percent. I mean, we budgeted fifteen hundred and we spent forty-five, thirty.
Halfway down the page, on page five.
Yeah, halfway down, under.
Yeah, I see.
Civil authority, I don't know what that was. Kind of funny before to spend that kind of money, but DCA, but.
Okay, I didn't print out that account.
I mean, I can, I can drop in the office and we can take these up, I mean, you know.
Yeah. No, it was good point, so I will print that out tomorrow.
Yeah, under, under, uh, page six, you had sanitation, repairs and maintenance. I'm, I'm looking at that one, there was five thousand bucks, and we spent sixteen and a half.
Really compact there, I think.
Yeah, the work that was done, the electrical work.
Yeah, and also the, the new shed.
Yeah, I know they converted that over.
Yeah, with the issue, part of the issue there is we received, uh, forty-six, forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, funds from the solid waste district. And the idea was to use some of that for, for these purposes, these additional, uh, projects.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Yeah, compact, our loan was thirty-three thousand eight hundred.
Right.
You know, in that account.
Okay. The, um, page five, the bottom, the tax sale acquired properties, that's for the, the twenty-four eight ninety-five, that's what we put in already to tear down these properties, is that what that is?
Yeah, tearing down as well as, um, the asbestos remediation.
No, the employee's pension, evidently that was just because there was, you had to make up some stuff or something, like, I think I remember you mentioning something about that, that's.
Where's that?
Uh, page seven. You had twenty-five, five bedrooms, and we went to thirty-nine, two. We spent. I think you mentioned something, we had to increase that.
What lot, or what expense?
Top of the page.
Employee pension.
Fourth line down, employee's pension. It's, it's contribution, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
And I think you had to make something up there, something, I'm thinking, that's why I heard.
We are still underfunded by approximately.
Yeah, I remember you talking about that, I watched one of the shows before I got on the board, I remember that.
That number that appears there is an actuarial calculator contribution.
It's twenty-five.
Broken out by different departments. And this is what was charged to the town general fund.
Okay. Yeah, let's go to highway department, page thirteen.
Where's Mike when you need him?
Yeah, he's still here, I can hear him.
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna ask him a question before you escaped, cause I looked at the invoice today, and there was, uh, in regards to that radiator repair. I mentioned, I think, one of the meetings, I think it was the last meeting, was eighteen hundred bucks, and ended up being thirty-two hundred dollars or something. And then there was an odd line in there where they said something about there was damage to the radiator, so I'm wondering if something happened to the radiator, and that's why we couldn't claim it. I mean, did somebody hit it, or, I mean, they wouldn't have put it on as a damage to the radiator.
Let's go get Mike, can you say?
There was a leak. He may have already left. He may know, I just, when I looked at the invoice this morning, it just kind of stuck out. But Ron, uh, the town highway miscellaneous. Uh, page thirteen. Second page of the highway fund.
Okay, the one thirteen.
Yeah, it's another one of those miscellaneous, uh, revenue.
Okay, is it fund number one twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it went up, well, you had ten thousand in there, and we got twenty thousand, three, two, three.
That was option process.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Mike, when I was looking at that twenty-eleven freight line that had radiator issue.
Yeah.
I looked at the bill this morning, and it was thirty-two hundred, ended up being. But there was a funny line in there that the mechanic noticed that there was damage to the radiator.
Yeah, it's cause the truck went off the road, got stuck.
So we damaged radiator before it got repaired. Does that, I mean?
No, when the truck, truck went off Christmas Day, and when it got pulled back on, they figured that it cracked the radiator.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? It had nothing to do with the previous radiators, if that's what you're asking me. That problem has since been resolved. That was like the six radiator, three more trucks, six or seven. That's since.
Yeah, just, it's just funny when it said damage to the radiator on the line there in the mechanic's comments.
Oh, Patriots? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what they're assuming.
Oh, I don't know, it's like, I just thought it sounded funny.
I called and questioned it myself.
Cause I didn't know if it was.
How did it get damaged? Is it in relation to the previous radiators? And they said, no, something damaged it. The only thing we could figure, Christmas Day, you got stuck at the end of Sand Hill, you got pulled back on by the lawyer, and that Monday when we came in, the radiator had all leaked out onto the floor.
So something we done, then. It shouldn't have been, it wouldn't have claimed that cause it probably wouldn't be covered on the insurance claim.
I don't know.
Probably a thousand dollars deducted, probably about what it was, whatever, anyway. Just curious. Oh, and we roll along.
All set with highways?
No, but that truck that was in that accident, that will be repaired? I can't remember, we got an update on that?
That was one we're replacing this year.
That's one we replaced, but I mean, this is.
It's totaled.
Oh, that one was totaled, that's right. I thought at one point we thought about it could be, right.
That's the initial call was.
There's so many that were down, I lose track of them all.
Right, the initial call was that it, it could be repaired, but then they.
They totaled it.
They estimated and totaled.
And, I'm sorry, I was gonna crack errors, we'll, we'll just approve it this year's meeting.
And we received the insurance check that was deposited this morning, hundred thirty-seven thousand.
The other one's a six wheeler, the one that we approved.
For next.
Wednesday, for next year.
Next year.
Next. We're supposed, we're telling you to get a six wheeler this year, we're working on.
We got a six wheeler.
You, you, were you an entire buy in the, this year or something? There's some of these, uh, expenses on trucks, there's a two thousand eight with fourteen thousand dollars in it? Eight.
Freight line or six.
It was a repair.
That's the truck we're replacing, the warranty ran out on it, it's starting to cost us money. That's the one that was approved last year's budget, we just have to go around.
Okay, that's like, yeah, just a lot of money spent on that one.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they, they're five to six years, and then they, their municipal life is done.
Yeah.
Really, that's when they stop, once that warranty runs out.
Cause that, that twenty-eleven had ten thousand dollars, but part of it's that, that's three thousand, three hundred of it's that radiator, and then I assume there's.
Rest were all, rest were all covered.
Okay. Was that at the highway garage, what one, Town Village Garage there is, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars spent?
Which page you were?
Uh, page fifteen.
And building, maintenance.
Yeah, building and maintenance and repairs, I don't know what's.
The well, the well, yeah.
Thank you, the well.
I think that's it.
What'd you say? I'll, I'll stop. Sixteen.
That's enough.
You want the exact title on that?
Sure.
Fifteen eight thirty-four.
Yeah, I had advocated that. I think it was a very worthwhile investment, and I think it would be very beneficial.
Ten or twelve that we had advocated, right?
I think it was more than that.
Yeah, I think it was more than that, I think it was about sixteen thousand.
But then we had, we had the extra added that we talked about some time ago.
Right.
The extra thing.
Pressure reducer.
Right.
The only other question I have is in regards to the development fund. Have we started, are we gonna start charging April first? Did we come up with a date with the?
If we decide April first was too.
Too soon.
Too, uh, soon. I believe, uh, we decided on July first, it'd give us a chance to get the first letter out. I believe we decided on July 1st, it'll give us a chance to get the first letter out and then if they don't respond, we send out a more, you know how debt collection goes. The second letter is a little more forceful and if they still don't, then, since, I'm assuming, we could put liens on these things?
Some of them got liens filed on them, some of them we don't.
Yeah.
We, we, I'm not gonna laugh, we, there's another meeting scheduled somewhere along that within the next week, so we'll find out better.
There aren't many accounts that are delinquent. There might be three or four that are more than a couple of months old. I think Saltzman, he's like five months behind. I mean, we get payments, but he's still behind.
Hasn't caught up.
Well, then we talked about.
So it's not terribly.
Yeah, I just know that we had talked about April 1st and I hadn't heard an update recently.
Yeah, so July 1st, we're gonna have, start sending out, well, we'll send out letters sometime the end of this month, early part of May, warning people affected July 1st. There'll be a late charge and we can only do one late charge on the current, you know, the current delinquent payment. You can't go backwards.
Yeah.
You know, so like Saltzman, if he's five months behind, we can't charge him five late fees.
Now, what about, we were gonna come up to speed with these like UCC filings?
They've been done, as far as I know.
Well, I know Katie researched some of the shit, you're gonna find a lot of them that we were told would go file, didn't get filed, so we gotta pursue that situation.
I, I just think it's, this is something that.
Gary was working on, I think he's filed most of them.
This is something that should have been nipped in the bud earlier, you're talking July 1st, I mean, come on.
Originally, originally we were talking January 1st.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And now it's just getting pushed back there.
We're talking to the previous board.
We discussed it with, while Gary wasn't on at that point, Shane may have been at that meeting and I know it was when Nikki was still here, she came up and we discussed it at that point, how much difficulty, how much more pain in the neck work we involved and we tried to start.
We've gone through a lot of transitions.
Because we've discussed different ways of trying to do it.
It seems to me there's a lot of stuff that, you know, we, we're gonna get around to it, we assign a parameter to get to it and we don't reach that. Now I'm here in July, not happy.
All right, and then the other question I had is on delinquent taxes, what do we, have you talked to?
I contacted Ray, he was gonna be putting together some documents for me, he's been away for a bunch of days, but he was gonna be sending me a format to, for us to fill out for him to do all his work, so I'm still waiting on that.
Yeah, and then there's also, I mean, quite a few that are just, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it clearly it's, you know, just a few payments missed here and there. I mean, is anything done to follow up with them? I mean, it does add up over time, because if you look at even where we stand this year or from last year, a lot of it is, you know, 200 here, 300 there, but over time.
I think we need to just hit an initial letter and then oftentimes that'll do a good job of bringing money forward to them, you need to go the standard process for the tax allowances.
Right, but those initial letters.
I have been in contact with Ray and he's, I think he's assembling, they have this process down and he's assembling this spreadsheet for me to add information to.
But the initial letters for these smaller pieces have not gone up?
Has not gone up.
And I mean, that's.
Will those come out from his office?
In your conversation with Ray, Shane, have you had, has he expressed any information on the so-called bankruptcies? I know one of them, the biggest one we had was, I, when I was on the board before I got off, we were told that one was on a bankruptcy and it should have been processed and it's still sitting here.
Yeah.
What is it?
That's the Zudneck, owns $27,000, something close to 27 grand out there.
I mean, is there, is there payment?
It's a bankruptcy situation.
Yeah.
And I think, I think there's two other ones in there, Noah's one and I can't remember the other guy's name, they're right around 10, 13,000, somewhere in there, that those are also bankruptcy issues, I think. And I don't, those are just fairly recent, I mean, within, I'd say recent by then, I mean, three to five years, but.
Okay, any other questions on your current budget? All right, thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
All right, review overtime, comp time report. Hopefully that's our last winter storm.
Amen to that.
Hopefully.
Let's see how the high winds go tomorrow.
Oh, we don't even talk about them. All right, any other questions on that?
Nope.
Review task list, we had an update, I think, last week on Vilas Bridge, didn't we talk about that? Or there was something?
We didn't, but there's been an update since, right?
Yeah, well, it was in our packet, that's right. That we got the bridge.
That was pretty good, you guys could put that, that information on the Vilas Bridge meeting in there that you guys went to, interesting reading, filled the site.
Any other updates on Vilas Bridge?
Yeah, I'm still pursuing every month or two, I'm, there's an office down in the, out in Washington that wrote a letter a couple of years ago to, to the Federal Highway Administration, trying to press them to press the state of New Hampshire to fulfill its obligation related to the bridge up in Newport, which of course requires funding of reconstruction of the Vilas Bridge. And they never received a response, so I'm continuing to push this other office to get them to get a response from Federal Highways. So, I did it again a week or so ago and so we're continuing on that, so we're pushing.
Let me ask, because Deb got involved, no?
You know, you could have avoided that. The planning commission did speak in our last meeting about trying to get together with the wall hole, slightly because of the, we had previously, right? We discussed it, I think Chuck was gonna reach out to the wall hole, see what we can do to get some kind of time, their planning commission, to see if we can get together and have a discussion, meet a partner.
Thank you.
I mean, is that bridge obviously, it obviously affects you guys for quote-unquote, not having that bridge up. I don't know if there's anything that can be pushed on sort of that side, you know, the vital, vital need of fuel, oil delivery and all of that and everything, I mean, I don't know if there's an angle through that channel that we can push through the.
Well, if you need, you know, certain information or letters, you know, certainly let me know.
Yeah, I think that the gist of the meeting is that to look at regional economic development issues and how wall hole, North Wall Hole, Bellas Falls, Rockingham are all kind of tied in the hip. And, you know, our economies, including Westminster as well, are all tied together and try to push that as a way to, to get some funding by state or just New Hampshire funding for the bridge.
Yeah, I sense we're gonna have to get some good national, federal funding into this somehow. Okay, Depot Street Bridge, VTRAM, if it's got anything new on that? Something is there meeting?
I had said something, they wanted to have a sort of stakeholders meeting and I had recommended, I think it's at the staff level and I wanted you to be involved as well.
They haven't confirmed a date, right?
I was looking at the next, 11th or the 12th, next week, and I bounced that back off of VTRAM's. I think it's still at a very limited level, it's not a community sort of meeting at this point, it's just sort of some stakeholders. So I copied Miles Mickel on, on that also and depending on when the meeting is, we'll attend it.
Okay. Theater committee, they have been meeting, they've had two meetings, I think, or three at this point, two, and another one on the 11th, I believe. So they're starting to figure out what the committee will be doing and what kind of recommendations they'll bring to us. No update on quality of life, I'm assuming there's still no update. Bridge Street Bridge.
Winter regional right now is in the process of putting together the roadway and bridge lists and Chuck has been attending those meetings and there's another one next Monday night. And again, we're trying to make sure that the Depot Street Bridge is on the 10-year plan, that, you know, something can happen into nine years out.
Is the transportation committee one of the committees you'd be interested in beyond?
Yeah.
Okay.
Transportation is the chapter in the town plan and I'm.
Yeah, I mean, so it makes sense, I just.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, that would be good, because I'm, right now I'm on natural resources and energy and we have Chuck going to the transportation meetings, it'd be good to have. They usually get you some, they usually send you something after they get the name and then they, you select which, which one to go, but they're open meetings, they're open to the public, so if you can go to the Monday meeting, that would be good.
Okay, it's Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I'll forward.
Five o'clock, I believe, on Monday.
It's a late, it's a late meeting this time.
Six o'clock, six o'clock.
I'll send you the information tonight.
Thank you. Animal control, that kind of got a little delayed, that wasn't. Well, we were looking at the ordinance again and revisiting that, but that was something Ann was working on, so I'll have to, we'll have to figure out who wants to take over that task, might fall to me.
Are you rewriting the ordinance or are you just?
We were looking at, revisiting, deciding what, A, looking at the ordinance, but also figuring out, can we get actual animal control and get an animal control officer and all the issues involved with that. Ann was researching it and trying to figure out what could be done, but kind of got left Revolving loan fund, we just spoke about that, town hall roof.
Pepper was working with Jones on that, he's, as you know, has left, so we're, nobody on this right now, so now that the weather's changing, we could probably get him up there.
And do we, those ads have gone out for?
Yeah, we posted the ads and applications are due on the 14th, if I'm not mistaken.
And should we add on to here the traffic committee?
Cool.
Which will make a decision next slack bar meeting, 7, 17, is that when our meeting is?
Do you still need a letter, because I volunteered to go on that committee and form a board, and you still want a letter of interest on that?
Did you send one in or not?
The traffic, I offered to go on it.
Did you send a letter or email?
No, I have, but you want one?
Yep. So anyone who is interested in being on the committee, the deadline is Monday, or when, no, when is the deadline? I just saw the ad and I can't remember.
I've done so many ads lately.
To submit your name to carry, if you're interested in joining the traffic committee meeting, or committee.
One update related to that is we have posted a series of signs, I discussed that in a previous meeting that we had ordered up signs, Mike put them up last week in a lot of locations, but none that are driven by the 24,000 pound.
Directing people to truck routes and.
Yeah, like with, to get to New Hampshire 12, if you're coming north on Route 5, it sends you straight up by Atkinson, it no longer sends you to the town. And coming from the other side as well, we have through, you know, through trucking signs here and there as well. Excuse me, yeah, truck route.
Truck route signs, yeah, I saw that one.
It's the 11th, Susan.
The 11th, okay, so by the 11th, send in a name to carry. Okay, so, goals, road inventory, we've got that, just heard that. Sidewalk, sidewalk condition map, I'm assuming nothing further on that, would that be something that will get updated this summer?
Um, we had, Mike and I have not talked about, is that on, where's that?
It's under the goals, under comments, update sidewalk condition map. I think Mike had said someone from the, one of the road crew normally does that, but of course they've been busy, so they're not gonna do it in the winter.
I think that was a Pepper thing also.
That was Pepper thing?
Yeah, and we're also down a couple of people due to medical reasons out of highway right now. Could be a good thing for new public works director to jump on as well.
Yeah. Culvert maintenance, that's ongoing, what's hap, when do we get this fancy machine?
We got it.
You got it already?
Well, that's just a blower, that we have.
Oh, the blower, no, but the other thing.
Vector.
The vector, well, I was gonna wait for 30 days after town meeting, so there's no reconsideration vote or anything, and once that happens, I was gonna start in on, on things like that. We need to, you know, that, the public works director, the, the compactors for recycling center, things like that, we'll start again after that 30-day period.
Okay, so consider property maintenance position, we've done that, we can cross that off, we just have to hire it now and hire public works director. Island development, continue work with BDC on redevelopment of Robertson.
A little update, they are trading with advertising it for a project, whatever, if they can get anybody interested in trying to get involved with a project out there, that's, came from BDCC, they're heading that, that project there. They're also working on a TIP, trying to tie it into a TIP district, but there's a lot of hurdles to get past that, because you're gonna have a developer lined up and the money before you can go ahead, so they're talking about filing for a preliminary application to get onto the list, I think there's only two, two districts left, so if you don't get your name in, you might miss out the ball.
I don't think you need an end user before you do it.
Pardon?
I'm not aware of you needing an end user before you establish a TIP district.
Well, you have to bring, you do a preliminary and then once that gets filed, you get on the list, so there's, you can set up, Gary was telling us at last meeting, there's only like two districts left, he's left, that's why I was waiting to see if you, but, there is one, but then when you go to the final, you've gotta have a developer online, you have a final, you've gotta have all your money lined up before you, before they let you apply for a district. And that, that'll be the last hurdle you've gotta get to, because if there's nobody lined up, it's dead in the water, I mean, you can't go any further, so, but that's where we are at that point.
Okay. Traffic safety speed control, hopefully the committee will be talking about that. Townwide policing, I don't know what's happening with the bill in the Senate, do you, is anyone? I mean, in the House, Senate?
Last time I talked at a town meeting, I talked, I nailed Treber about that, he said they changed the verbiage on it, I haven't looked it up, it's Bill S273, if anybody wants to go on the website and look at it, and I haven't seen anything in the legislative report about it lately.
Yeah, I didn't see any either.
So I think Treber said it was probably gonna be dead on arrival when it gets there, so they're probably gonna just bump it over to next year.
Really?
So, yeah, but it's in the works.
Yeah, I know, but.
They're withdrawing, they're gonna pull the state police stuff back.
Yeah, that was at a county committee meeting where Jeanette White was there and we talked.
So I know right now, Saffron Drummer, the last meeting I was at, their trustees meeting, they were discussing where they were gonna go, and Wyndham Sheriff doesn't wanna talk to me either, so it's like, they're gonna be allowed anybody, so.
Yeah, they're setting Bill 55 right now, which is actually putting the squeeze on the state police instead.
Yeah.
So, that scope seems to be moving forward, so if they reduce that, they can't have any contracts and when there are other ones running out, they can't renew them. So therefore, that means there's no help from the state police that puts you down to county or forming your own police departments, they're kind of like putting you in a position of having to do something yourself.
Yeah, that's what.
And that's the one that's likely to pass.
That's likely to pass, yeah.
Right.
There's a bunch of other stuff in it, but that's the main part that'll have to package this year.
So at this point it would have impact on Saffron Drummer?
Already is. Bills win next week, gonna be fun.
That's right. Okay, signage, that's, animal control also, we don't, town old property, we're, we can cross some of these off, we just have to sell them, all right? Blighted buildings considering ordinance, consider ordinance, we never discussed that at all, I don't know whether it's something we wanna put down the line on an agenda or...
It might be interesting to do it, I know Springfield's got one of them, someone else, someone else, some other town just recently enacted one.
Claremont, I think was had one too.
Yeah, I think it's Claremont, but Springfield for sure.
Yeah, Springfield's got theirs, yeah.
What are you talking about?
So.
Blighted ordinance. Well, we can put it on further down the line on an, on an agenda if you want. Or if anybody wants volunteers to look at Springfield's ordinance?
I think Gary would be in this.
Oh, yeah, I'm glad they would.
Anybody want, want a volunteer to look at Springfield's ordinance, look at how it's working?
Never mind, I'll go up and talk to them, I know their chairman up there.
Yeah, we'll put you on the board, on the task for that.
All right, I'll chase it down.
Okay, thanks. Maintenance of Town-owned Property. Further discussion during budget meeting, adequate funds or appropriate personnel, okay, we've actually, we've formed those funds for Town Hall and for, but we do have some ADA stuff that still has to be done, correct?
Quite a bit.
And again, we're waiting for ideally that position to be hired out for that, correct?
Yep. Some will have to be contracted, the stairs outside in the alley over here, that's going to have to get contracted out, it's all new concrete work. But you need someone to design it, so.
Okay, maximize town resources for town owned buildings, Meeting House, Opera House, Waypoint. Well, we have the Opera House Committee, Waypoint Center and Rec Center, Meeting House.
We did establish cap funds, capital reserve funds for Meeting House and Opera House, which is good.
We haven't really discussed ways to improve any of these resources. Waypoint Center hasn't, Committee hasn't met, yes, Deb?
I was talking to Doreen Stuley the other day, and she would like to see the Waypoint Center Committee reformed. They haven't done anything in so long, and don't even know who's on it anymore, there's no action. And they're, since they added that, that system that's available for members to use, basically Skyping, some form of, it's not Skype, say, but
The conference.
Yeah, with, to have some, could make, make having northern material or information more available, readily available to southern communities. She'd like to see that more readily used, and it could be, if the committee, you know, basically the committee would be, that's just one facet of it, but being active in utilizing the building better.
Did we point anyone to Waypoint? I forget, no, no we didn't. Because it was sort of add on.
Asking for more volunteers, right?
It was in the ad.
It was in the ad, that's right, but nobody.
But nobody gave forward.
I mean, normally it was someone from the Chamber, or whoever's in there, someone from the Select Board.
I know Ellen was on it at one point.
I was too. I think we met once.
It was staff from the Town Hall.
Staff from the Town Hall, Gary probably, right?
Development Director was on there.
Ellen was.
Select Board, Ellen was the staff person.
Yeah, well, makes sense, I mean, that's a nice, I haven't even seen that new system they have, but it would, and you said it was for, for members, or for?
Chamber members, I think are actively using to use that, and they have a couple of needs.
We had a state meeting there, actually related to Robertson Paper Mill, we had all, all kinds of folks from the state in and
And you used the?
We used the whole program, it was pretty slick.
And there's also a possibility of using on a fee base for others who aren't members as well, that has to, but that would take some brainstorming, again, committee could do something with that. You try to find volunteers for the summer to be able to have the facility more usable, accessible, because Doreen only has so many hours, I guess right now she hasn't volunteered. So, or second part time person, so, making it available to tourism is a necessary thing too, and again, some additional insights with brainstorming would help.
I know a few years back, when Dutch was in the Development Office, he wanted to advertise for, when we do for the docents for the Meeting House, to get one for the Waypoint Center as well, to cover the extra, the other hours when the chamber's not open, during foliage and that kind of stuff.
And is that, it's involved in here?
A docent wouldn't be, it would be, that's a paid position.
Oh, it's a stipend, it's small stipend.
Yeah, it's like minimum wage.
Well, I mean, I think it probably makes, makes sense to get the committee going, is there anyone from the Select Board who would volunteer to be on the Waypoint Committee? If we get the Waypoint Committee up and running again, I mean, we've already advertised, so I think we can just appoint.
I was just, I was just thinking maybe to go out to the Women's Club and ask for volunteers, we're ladies that are all retired. Diane Potter's the president, she could bring it up in the meeting and ask if anybody's interested in, in, just, you'd only have to do one day a week.
You do run into wrestling people down there.
You do. Did anyone catch that report, one of the TV stations did, on the Canal? I don't know when it aired, but I caught it the other day, they, they had a history of the Canal, and they were standing, and they were talking about the history of paper production in Bellas Falls. I can't remember, it was one of the, I don't think it was CAX, but it might have been, I'll have to find it again.
Wasn't the PBS, I think they had.
I don't think so, but I mean, it was last week, I, I mean, I caught it over the weekend, it was interesting. I'll send an email out. But it reminds you that there's a lot, you know, people show up, there is a lot to see in Bellas Falls, so it'd be good to have some guidance there. All right, so no Select Board volunteers for the committee? I guess it'll be me. All right, Deb?
Uh, no. I have to keep thinking in my mind, okay, can I make any meaning for anything else?
I know, you're kind of fully booked, aren't you? All right, well, we'll have to think of other people, maybe someone from the Women's Club would be interested in volunteering to be part of the committee too. All right. Okay, Budget Board to be notified of all change orders prior to implementation, we haven't really had any of those issues lately, I don't think. Bottom Bridge, on there too, all right, that's the review. Tasks, review agenda items for the next meeting, April 17. We have the, appoint the committee for the traffic. We have public hearing, right, that's different, that's happening, right, with the, what they're carrying with the zoning? Has to be done again, right?
Put the second, put the update. Is that the second one? Yeah.
It was Local 44.
Can't see what number it is, 44.
This place in history.
Yeah.
Bellas Falls Canal.
Yeah, it was really interesting, I, I was watching.
If you get it on the, just Google it.
Yeah. Anything else for next?
Can we get something on there, maybe just update me, and I've been getting that since I've been on the board, down to recycling center, when we're going to implement those stickers? I know you and Gary have been going around, round, you told me, but also Gary mentioned to me that there's, the letter between Westminster and Rockingham about sharing that thing, there's something about Westminster residents can use it.
Yeah. Yeah, in lieu of.
It's a policy that was signed several years ago.
Long ago, by Paul McGinley.
Yeah, and I was going to say.
It was never, it was never, it was sort of a handshake sort of thing.
Well, can't we update that, or either? I mean, I, I'd be around the work on that.
The idea was to do one thing at a time, roll out the, the sticker program, we had hoped to get it done by town meeting. Gary, right now, just due to, you know, certain reasons, is, is looking to have it July 1.
Yeah, well, it makes sense, because they're year, he's got year stickers, so.
Yeah, but I wanted to get the revenue in this year, if at all possible. But, so he's, he's, as far as I know, he sent me a very long email on this a couple of weeks back, but I was in the process of ordering all that, and the complicated part is trying to figure out who lives where. With regard to Westminster, the agreement was, in lieu of paying real estate taxes, we let them use our facility. Again, they, they have curbside pickups, probably don't get a whole lot of people, but we were thinking, we would just give them, you know, a pile of them to divvy out to their, to their citizens, we would do something similar, we would, you know, send out, you know, with, somehow get them out there. And that's some of the logistics, but also on, but ongoing, if people come in, how do you verify that someone is a Rockingham resident? And one of the things Gary was going to try to find out is specifically, under our permit, who gets, you know, who is allowed to use the facility? Is it residents, is it property owners, is it taxpayers, and, and he's done some homework on that, I need to go revisit what he has sent back to me.
Little voter checklist, give us that information.
Well, that's just voters.
Give you some of it.
That's all the voters.
People are on the voter checklist.
Hey, Tom?
Well, right now, anyone is using it, and we've been talking about this for a year, so. I followed a car up 91 randomly, followed them all the way without a state plate, they pull in the recycling center.
Do you own property in town?
I highly doubt it, but.
Gary mentioned that they get guys coming in from Athens and Grafton coming in there.
People from New Hampshire coming in.
It makes no sense, why, if they get curbside pickup for rubbish and recyclables, why are they even?
But just about every other town has placards in place.
Oh, yeah.
If they live here, they'll get a tax, if they own property, they get a tax bill, if they rent here, they get a letter from their landlord that says they currently are renting on whatever, and then they would get a sticker.
Yeah.
And start from there, you got to try to get it in place, because it costs a lot of money with the amount of product that's going in there.
And having been down there at times, you see a lot of New Hampshire residents coming over, using that.
Well, one of the problems with that is they're renters here, but they don't register their vehicle here.
That's a separate issue, but if they live here, they pay rent in the town of Rockingham, and their landlord could easily write.
Yeah, but that's why you can't judge on the plate.
No, because Gary said a lot of.
Landowners who don't, you know, pay taxes here, but they have a seasonal home or something, so, or, anyway.
If New Hampshire car came in, couldn't you ask them to, to show some proof that they live here?
Yeah, because the other thing is Gary said a lot of them come in, and it may be registered out of state.
They come in with utility goods or something.
He knows who they are, he's, I know who he is, but he comes in sometimes, you know. And I agree with him that there should be a sticker, needs to be a fix, because if you hand out one that can be movable, I can go and ask you, and I don't love you, I say, can I borrow your car for today, I'll go down, dump, and get rid of it, and, and Gary's not into that. Says they should be on the, on the, you know, so.
Okay, so are we going to add this to the next agenda then?
And then he said something about the fee you guys are trying to charge for some of these that.
Yeah, I just, I just haven't gotten together.
We got it.
But are we ready to add it to the next agenda? Or?
I like to get it moving, get it like.
Sure.
We've discussed it.
Get it down the road, let's get it in place, get it moving.
Well, we need, yeah, we'll have the definitive plan for the next agenda, is that something we'll have?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? I'm sure there's other things that will come up.
Yeah, we want to have a list of, of roads for paving.
Right.
For you guys to bless.
Okay. And what we don't have on here, it's a joint meeting, but, is that something we usually, I mean, it's not until May, but May's finally coming up.
When is the Theater Committee going to be reporting to the?
We don't know yet, they don't know yet.
I think they're going to try to do some research.
Oh, I'm just curious, I, I know they've been, like.
I don't think they'll be, they won't be ready for the next meeting.
They haven't even really got into it yet much.
But I'll, I'll.
They haven't even started with any policies or anything like that.
I'm on the committee.
Yeah, Deb is.
Yeah. The, and I wasn't at the last meeting, but I was at the first meeting, so I read the minutes, and I read the minutes of the second meeting. And we are, put together a survey, which worked with Rick Andrews, I'm not sure if he spoke to you about it, but a method, where we donated, I donated pencils, and somebody else donated a bunch of tickets to try and get people to, to buy in, by getting a ticket right near zip code or something like that, on zip code, on the back of the other piece of the two tickets, right? We collect them, people would win a box of popcorn after, just before the movie starts, by doing this, we accrue the information and data that will show us where our people are coming from, and this was anticipated to be done, I mean, this is the rough, this is rough out of it. Anticipated to be done for approximately six weeks, to see where the viewers are coming from, the areas of, that we're covering with the theater. So that was the intent. I'm not sure exactly when they're starting that.
Will one of the committee members volunteer to do that?
Do that at the recent.
I'm not saying that I wouldn't, simply that I don't know when they intended to start it, I didn't get that from the minutes.
Yeah, I, I was at that meeting, and the next was the 11th. They're going to start it, I mean, because there's plays going on now, but they were planning on starting it the next time a movie was showing, so I'm assuming they'll start it now.
Is the play still going on?
No. They went on the weekends only, but, so I don't know if they were going to, they were going to start it even while the play was going, so it could have started this week, I'm not sure.
Who's that?
The committee.
The committee.
Oh, the committee's doing it.
But, well.
Well, no, the staff would be handing out the, the little coupon and gathering the.
We need to talk about logistics and that, because if they, they have to delay, I mean, if you're going to have a line going out the door, because we try to process people as fast as we can, if we're fiddling with other things, that's not going to work well for.
Well, I mean, I don't know if they've figured out the logistics, but.
They, they need to talk to me about how to make that happen.
I know they were talking with Rick about how to work it out, but I don't know if it'd be gone beyond that.
Yeah, because it is awkward, it's an extra step in selling tickets, you know, so.
Yeah, when they're handing the money, I don't want people.
Less a volunteer, one of us was to come in there each night and do that.
Yeah, they're handling cash, I don't want them thinking about anything other than the cash.
Yep, get it.
Do we have a policy on the use of Jingle Theater?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we do.
It's on the website, under the Opera House.
No, I'm just curious, I've had some discussions with some people, that's why I'm just wondering how they're going to, I mean, because last time I know, they, they approached and wanted to reduce fees and everything else. I wonder if that's going to be part of the discussion.
None of us have, I have, none of us have said anything like that.
No.
Because the whole point is to make it more effective, more income producing, I mean, that's, that's our intent, we're not working with any of the other stuff. We're not deciding films, we're not working on, on plays or anything else, it's simply to make the, to come with, with ideas, to make the theater more profitable. That's the point.
Well, that's one way.
Yeah, I know, but none of us have said that.
You don't discuss it, then, it's a moot point.
Because there's lack of income, reduce fees, so.
Well, they will be reviewing the, the committee will be reviewing the policy, that's, I think that's on the next, the next agenda.
Because if they're arguing the fees and the other options, and do a percentage of the take like the movie does.
Yeah, but of course, it's recommended.
That's done already. The musical, we get a, we get a piece of the house.
Yeah, right.
After 200.
After 200. All right, anything else?
You should take that one off.
Review and approve orders, bills, and warrants.
Orders, bills, and warrants to make the motion to approve them.
Second.
All in favor? Any other business, Doreen?
No.
No, I'm all set.
Peter?
All set.
All set, hey, Tom?
Just a question, if we've ever, we were talking about a few things and it came up, the point of sale, we were going to try to incorporate a point of sale system for the recycling center only takes cash, the theater only takes cash, have we ever looked into a universal?
Reci, credit card?
Yes.
We have not.
We discussed it.
For the theater, I know it was discussed at one point. Rick was looking into it.
We discussed it for.
Paying taxes.
Townwide, pay taxes, you could.
Water sewer.
Reset, is all this handled cash and recycling, and then?
One of the, one of the issues is, anytime we make a sale, anytime we have revenue come in, we have to assign it to a, to a budget line, and that could be real, that could be a real challenge, but I know that we have not, we've not dedicated significant time to this.
Yeah, but I would think a system could easily do that, I mean, I do that with PayPal.
Categorize your sale, recycling center.
Yeah, but we have to, we, you know, sometimes when someone pays their taxes, we have to allocate it to town, village, Saxon's River, I mean, it's just, it's not, it's, it's not real simple, but we could try to figure it out, we've just, again, been in a period of transition for some times.
And just wondering, I see the engineers out there again, or the surveyors out there again today with the sidewalks, are we, we're going to be presented with whatever they come up with, and then, because that's got to get going pretty soon, right?
Yeah.
Sidewalks. Before paving.
All right, any other business? Secretary Session, needed money, good. All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right, thank you, guys and ladies.